You're looking good, aren't you? You're helping the economy.
It's not going to get any better than that. We just might have to sweat some tonight.
Folks, if you'd give us your attention, please, at seven o'clock or a bit past, and we have a public hearing, we have a sign-up sheet up here. I don't know if everyone who desires to do so has signed up to speak. If not, if you'd come forward, and I'm going to hand this sheet to Mr. Woody over here, and you can see him and sign up if you have not done so. Okay, I'm going to assume that everybody who desires to speak is on the sheet then. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Woody. All right, we'll call the June 7, 2011 Meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order, and at this time, we'll have an invocation. If you would, join us in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this opportunity to serve you and to serve your people. Father, these are difficult times with difficult decisions ahead of us. I pray that our spirit will be charitable and our wisdom will be from you, that we may make wise decisions beyond understanding of others. I pray for the wisdom of those who speak, that they'll speak succinctly and they'll speak in the Spirit of Christ, for we ask it in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. Mr. Mashburn, are there any adjustments of the agenda from the staff?
Mr. Chairman, we do have several adjustments. First of all, under the public hearing, we do have a cancellation, the consideration of an economic development incentive for an undisclosed company. It's requested by the Economic Development Director that that be removed from the agenda this evening, so that item memo number three will be removed from the agenda. We have the following additions. Item P is a request from the Iredelle Stateful Schools for permission to apply for a North Carolina Educational Lottery Fund, to make application for lottery funds. That would be item P. Item Q would be a request from the Mooresville South Iredelle Economic Development Commission for release of extraterritorial jurisdiction. And then, would like to add to item I, let's add this to item I, that's a request from the Department of Social Service, and this is a request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 55. So, under item I, you will have a request for Budget Amendment Number 51, as well as Budget Amendment Number 55. We have a closed session already scheduled. In addition to that, we have an item for economic development. That would be GS 143, 318, point 11A4. And that's economic development. Those are the changes to the agenda that the staff has, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, those are the adjustments from the staff. Were there any adjustments from any member of the board? Hearing none, the floor is open for adoption of this agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Griffith for adoption of this agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move immediately to appointments for the board, and this evening, we're pleased to have the Mayor of Stateful, the Honorable Kostic Cutay with us this evening. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Last night at our City Council meeting, we emphatically and unanimously approved Resolution 1411, and I would like to read that, if you'll indulge me for a moment. This is a resolution recognizing the career of Joel Mashburn. Whereas Joel Mashburn began his career in public service as a member of the United States Army, serving in both Germany and Vietnam, and whereas Mr. Mashburn chose to continue serving the public as a career county administrator, and whereas he has served as administrator in five North and South Carolina counties for over 36 years, and whereas Mr. Mashburn served 23 of those years as manager of Iredelle County, and whereas Joel Mashburn exemplifies the character of a professional public administrator, and whereas he has worked diligently to create a positive and productive working relationship between Iredelle County and its municipalities, and where as he has treated all Iredelle County citizens with fairness and compassion, and whereas he has strived to create a collaborative working relationship among both elected and appointed leaders in the county's governments, and whereas he willingly takes the time to mentor community leaders and his fellow managers, and whereas much of the county's reputation for stable intergovernment relations between Iredelle County's governments can be credited to his leadership behind the scenes. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Stateful, North Carolina, that it thanks Joel Mashburn for his career in public service and for his contribution to a positive collaborative relationship between Iredelle County and the city of Stateful, and it recognizes his example as a consummate professional public manager. The City Council wishes him well in his retirement. This the sixth day of June 2011. Constantine H. Cutay, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, would you come through the gate and present this award to Mr. Mashburn? Mr. Mashburn, would you go forth and receive this honor, sir?
Yes, sir, come here.
Joel, I know you wanted it on the 21st, but we thought that giving you some oral support before your budget hearing was the least we could do.
Thank you, and I do appreciate very much. It's always been my pleasure to work with municipalities in Iredelle County, and I would concur that I think, over the years, the relationship between Stateful and Iredelle County, as well as the other municipalities, has been one that I am pleased to have been a part of, as I'm sure others are as well. And again, thank you very much for this honor. I appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Heitz, I'm not trying to take from Joel's time in the sun here, but your chairman could use a little help tonight, too.
We didn't know whether to do a resolution or a eulogy, so we wanted to wait.
Guess money out of town would probably be satisfactory. Next, an appointment for the board. We had a presentation by the Iredelle County Arts Council regarding the old county jail lease.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to appear before you this evening on behalf of the Iredelle Arts Council. My name is Tony Arnt. I serve as the President of the Board of Directors. This evening, we appear in front of you with one focus in mind, and that is for an extension of our lease at the old jail facility. We have been in that position for over 20 years, and things are really starting to happen for arts in Iredelle County, which is really a blessing, and we should be thankful for that. With that said, I'm going to turn over the podium to our Executive Director this evening, Ms. Jody John Pippins, and she will share with you briefly a little bit about the Arts Council and where we hope to go with your support. Thank you. Jody?
Thank you, Tony. Thank you so much for allowing us to come in and have an appointment with you tonight. Let me see if I can find this mouse. There we go. Okay, this is just a brief slideshow that I think is helpful, so everyone can see what an exquisitely interesting building the old jail is here in Iredelle County. And I want to thank Mr. Mashburn for helping us these last few months since I became Director. I've had the chance to get to know him a little bit, and I'm very proud to know you, and congratulations on everything tonight. Our mission statement is to initiate, encourage, and support the arts and cultural activities in Iredelle County. And it actually supports, you know, many counties surrounding us as well. We have lots of visitors that have been coming from far away for these last events that we've had. We were founded in 1972. We have one Executive Director and 14 Board members. We are in a new phase of growth for this, for our Arts Council here in Iredelle County, which is the reason why our Board of Directors hired me, a full-time Director, in the past. We were a conduit to get the funds from the North Carolina Arts Council grassroots to other organizations. And now, we are really trying to do more for the people in our community. So, why are we growing right now? We were, we are responding to one of the needs that was talked about in the 2007 Community Visioning Forum that the Chamber of Commerce helped in the city of Stateful. One of the things that was decided upon was to help support more of the cultural arts during that visioning forum. And another reason why we are trying to grow right now is to reflect the research of the North Carolina Arts Council, that arts do create jobs and increase the tourism. Okay, so what are we going to do in this new phase of growth? We want to have more programming for the citizens of Iredelle County. We want to mentor, have a mentor program for youth, more cultural events, more support of other arts organizations, so that we can give them more and keep, you know, letting that grow out and expand to all these other organizations that we have in our county. And then, how are we going to do this? One thing that we need to do is to have an extension of our lease, so that we have the security of the building that we're in before we do anything further. We have to have ADA, the Disability Act compliant facility. We need to have fundraising and community support in order to get this done as well. So, the extension of our lease. We are so proud to have the use of this space, and we've been there for over 20 years. As you can see in the slides, it's full of very rich character. This is our gallery and concert space. Right now, it's set up as the art crawl in this picture. So, we want to thank Iredelle County so much for letting us lease this building. Prior to fundraising for construction costs, we would like to ask for an extension of our lease. The Iredelle Arts Council has historically leased this building for five-year terms. Currently, our term is a one-year lease. Here's an example of another Arts Council that happens to be in an old jail as well. It's Burke Arts Council in Morganton, Burke County. They have what they call their Jailhouse Gallery. Their facility is a lot smaller than ours, actually, and I've showed them pictures of our beautiful building, and I must say that they're a little jealous. But, anyway, so, we have the potential to have it be very neat and interesting like they do, and then, and then some, since we have so much square footage. They have a 25-year lease from Burke County. So, the ADA compliant entrance and bathroom is what we would hope to do in order to have any grassroots funding being used for events at the old jail, at our facility. We do have to have that handicapped accessibility. So, we want to put in a new entrance and a handicapped accessible bathroom. And our future plans after the construction of this new entrance and bathroom would be, of course, to expand our programming and help continue this, you know, vibrant growth of Iredelle County that we've seen and the downtown Stateful area, even though it's such a rough time right now, it also is a vibrant time and full of joy, and that's what the arts can bring. Now, what's very interesting is the third-floor cell block above our gallery space is still just intact as it was in 1972, when it was last a jail, or about that time. We have very interesting historic writings on the walls from the inmates. No, they really, they really are interesting. And then, you know, so, we had some Wells Fargo's volunteers last Saturday for five hours scraping and cleaning these jail cells, because it really needed some help, and this was what they chose to do, their volunteer project. You can see one of the participants there at the bottom. So, if we received the grant monies that we've applied for, for different organizations, national and local, then we would like to display Iredelle County arts and heritage crafts in, you know, each cell possibly could display something very interesting about Iredelle County that people could tour. And at the minimum, we just want it nicer and clean, so people can get a quick little look at this piece of history. That's pretty much the end of our presentation. I don't know if you guys are supposed to ask me questions or not, but if you have any, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions, Ms. Pippin?
Are you applying for a one-year lease or a five-year lease?
Actually, we currently have a one-year lease, and we would like a long-term lease, so that with the building of the handicapped accessibility, we have the security of knowing that all the fundraising that we need to do to pay for that would not be for nothing. You know, so, we want to try to have a very long-term lease, like 25 years.
Is that what you're requesting tonight?
Yes.
Twenty-five years?
Yes.
Thank you.
She fixes that old jail up much more, the sheriff may come and take it back.
Well, you know, hopefully, he'll enjoy the arts. Any other questions?
Ms. Pippin, my concern is 25 years is a long time, and it is adjacent to our government center here. In 25 years, the county could, could have some need for that structure, or perhaps even raise it and clean it off and do something else with that parcel of property. That's my concern about going 25 years.
Mm-hmm. Well, we're hoping with one of the historic preservation grants, that we would have enough money to do even more upfitting and improving of the structure, you know, so that it wouldn't be as quite in the state that it's in now. And, and even if we had the security of a long-term lease, that would still be enough incentive for us to do the work ourselves.
But, that doesn't address the concern I stated about perhaps the county having a need for that building.
You're right. But even if we had it for a long period of time and have done the work ourselves, it would still be worth it to us, even if you had to use it at a later date.
I wouldn't want to go more than five.
Mr. Mashburn, you got any, you foresee any need for the use of this building for the next five years?
No, sir, I certainly don't see any needing in the next five years. I was going to inform the board, and Bill may correct me on this, but I think if you do 10 or more, then you have to announce publicly the meeting that you're going to take that action in. So, you would, if you wanted to take action tonight, you would have to do less than 10 years, or you'd have to put it off until another date.
My personal feeling, I'd be reluctant at this point to go much more than five years. It may not be conducive to your effort to raise money, but if we went 25 years on this thing, and we had a need for, for the building, the alternative we may have to seek, other than using that building or using that parcel of property, may wind up costing the county a whole lot of money. I may not be here to have to do it, but somebody may.
Can I ask to table this?
Yes.
Could I make a motion that we table this for further discussion?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Did I make a motion that we table this?
Okay.
For discussion?
All right. Well, you want to table it till our next meeting, or?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to table this request until our June 21 meeting? Any discussion on that motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I'll declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of fiscal year 2011, 2012 Iredelle County budget. Now, let me state the rules of procedure of the Board of Commissioners as it relates to public hearings. Each speaker is given five minutes. At the discretion of the Board, if there are a large number of speakers who have signed up, the Board can allot a total time allowed for all speakers, and that time can be evenly divided between those on opposite positions of the issue. So, at this time, I'll inform the Board that we have 29 speakers. So, that's 145 minutes, so that's, yeah. That's a while.
Can we shorten the time?
Pardon?
Can we shorten the time?
I don't think our rules of procedure make any leave that to our discretion.
Motion to buy cushions for the chairs.
Mr. Mashburn, Ms. Griffith has a question. Can we reduce the amount of time? But I don't believe that's, that discretion's afforded us in the rules, is it?
Yeah, the Board set the rules to begin with, so if the Board wants to make it three minutes each or two minutes each, then you certainly can do that, because it's your regulations, but you would have to do it by motion to do that.
Okay.
Or you can make a motion to suspend the rules and set it for whatever time you want to do it. You could do it that way.
Right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to suspend the rules and that we reduce the time to three minutes.
Okay, a motion to reduce the allotted time per speaker to three minutes. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So, those will be the rules as we move forward. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes, and we'll just begin down the list. The first person I have on the list is Mr. Dan Edwards. If you'd come forward, sir.
Mr. Chairman, you may want to call out three or four at a time and let them line up.
Thank you, sir.
There are actually multiple people in our group. Is it possible for us to all have a lump time?
Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry, repeat the question.
There are actually multiple people in our group. Is it possible for us to have one cumulative time to work with?
How many people do you have?
We have three, I believe.
Have they all signed up?
Are they all signed up?
I believe so.
Okay, I have Brenda Spees.
Yes.
Okay. Rhonda Wall. Who else is with your group? Okay, if you'd come forward, ma'am, I would like you to join these people. What's her name?
Kathy Crans.
Kathy?
Crans.
Okay.
Can I give my time to them?
Ma'am, y'all go get nine minutes. You can use it any way you want to.
All right, we appreciate your indulgence, and we thank you for the time that you've given us, as you have for the past 39, going on 39 years. And we'll be brief. We spoke last meeting about the document that we provided, and we've come here this afternoon, this evening, to give you a chance to ask any questions that you might have. I also want to add that the group of individuals that we are blessed with, with the children's home, to have leading and seeking out in the community to provide better pathways for our kids is untold in our history. We have a group of Board members who seek everything that they can to, to make a better life for our kids, and they leave no stone unturned. So, I want, want you to know that every, every penny that we get is served through the kids very adequately. One of the things I also want to say is that I have continually, in the past three weeks, had calls and texts from kids who have been in our home before, wanting to know if they can have jobs in our new store, which I want to elicit an invitation to everyone in the, in the room tonight, to our ribbon cutting on June 14th, is coming Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. for our special treasures. The program that we will offer jobs and have jobs for our kids that are in our program, it's more of a earn-to-learn or a learn-to-earn, where they will learn those skills that will keep them in a working force. And I'll now turn it over to Daniel Edwards.
Good evening. I'm the Director of Residential Services at the Children's Homes of Iredelle County. I'm responsible for program and development and management of cases at the, at the homes. Clearly, the youth that we serve deserve and need our support. There's a very dear human need here that I think you all recognize. But as much as we want to do what's right for the children of Iredelle County, I also know that sometimes difficult decisions have to be made, particularly where budgets are concerned. And for this reason, I'd like to offer a slightly different take on this issue in the form of a value proposition. Last year, a study was published at the University of Washington and University of Chicago in partnership with many colleges and DSS offices throughout the Midwest. The study evaluated outcomes for former foster youth at age 23 and 24 who had previously aged out of care. The data is absolutely staggering. I'd like you to consider a few points from this study briefly. By age 23 or 24, more than 50% of former foster youth under the study are unemployed, and the median annual income for those who do work is $8,000. $8,000. At the children's homes, we created job training and placement programs that have enabled 100% of our children over the age of 14 to have jobs. Nearly 25% of former foster youth, as participants of the study, have been homeless since exiting care. We started an independent living home to provide housing and supportive services at little to no cost to four to eight youth and their children. This is being done with absolutely no extra funding. More than 75% of female study participants have been pregnant, mostly unplanned, and of those, more than two-thirds have been pregnant more than once. Nearly 50% of male study participants have been arrested and incarcerated. 16% were currently incarcerated at the time of the study. Less than 6% who age out get a two- or four-year degree, and by 23 or 24, nearly 25% don't even have a GED or high school diploma. At the children's homes, we have never had a youth age out of care without graduating from high school, and in the last 12 months, we've had four enrolled in college. These kids aren't going anywhere. They can't afford to move to another county. So, let me ask you, what is the cost of providing a lifetime of entitlements and benefits to just one uneducated and impoverished youth, and the children that they inevitably How much does it cost to incarcerate one man, and how much does it cost for our justice system to protect our community from the crimes that he might commit? All sum, how much does it cost to address the needs of youth who have aged out of care when it's already too late to do anything about it? I submit that the long-term cost for one single person will be greater than the money that you stand to save annually by cutting our budget. The regular reimbursement we receive for our services covers cost of basic care only. We are adding services to address the issues I've outlined without asking for more money. We've built jobs, mentorship, and independent living programs that are completely outside of regular group home services. Loss of our funding will take away our ability to be proactive in finding these kind of solutions to the problems facing Iredelle foster youth. This is the fact, ladies and gentlemen, you're going to spend the money either way. I'd ask that you invest it now into the future of these children and the community that they will inhabit in the future. I thank you very much for your time and consideration. If you have questions now or at any point in the future, I'd be happy to field them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Spees.
Do you have any questions for us, before we give up our time?
Any questions, these folks? No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you so much. Remember, Tuesday at 10:00.
Okay, I'm gonna call out about three or four names here. Rhonda Wall, I believe Ms. Wall's headed for the microphone. Rory Crawford, if you'd go ahead and begin your walk-up, and Tom Simon. And see, Mr. Ben Beal, Bill Benfield's on the list. If you'd take a seat on the row here, Mr. Benfield.
Yes. Good evening, County Commissioners and fellow citizens. I come before you not representing any party, group, or affiliation, but as a citizen of Iredelle County. County Commissioners, Iredelle County taxpayers have charged and entrusted to, for you to oversee and manage our money and the efficient, effective, effective operation of our local government. I am sure we are, we all recognize that we are in the worst economy since the Great Depression, and families all over the county, Iredelle County, are experiencing reduced wages. They are cutting expenses, and many are downsizing or even losing their homes. We are all conscious of the conditions our country is operating in, and the majority of people believe the growth of government is an integral part of the problems we are facing. To adjust to this negative economic environment, households have been forced to adjust spending habits. The private sector, which operates on a supply-demand basis rather than one of entitlement, has also been forced to make adjustments. Both have made significant sacrifices to ensure present and future fiscal soundness. Government is, government is and should be no different. You are entrusted by the citizens, specifically those who elected you, to serve and to oversee that essential services are provided within the confines of what those of us pay, the bills of government, are willing to pay. According to the report card on county government growth published by the Civitas Institute August 2010, from 2000 to 2010 in Iredelle County, the number of county employees increased 32.8%, which is 708 positions to 940 positions, while the population increased 28%. In contrast, the number of private sector workers increased... twenty-eight percent. In contrast, the number of private sector workers increased only five point three percent. While some cuts in departments have been made, I am certain more can be made without disrupting the current level of service. Commissioner Robertson, in your letter in the State's Record and Landmark today, you made specific mention of housing-related departments which have made budget cuts. You specifically said the county inspections and Special Projects Department reduced the budget twenty-five percent only in the last two years. However, from 2005 to 2010, new residential building permits have declined eighty-five percent from 2,111 in 2005 to 319 in 2010. Renovations have also slowed considerably. One can conclude that the work decline in the private sector has not met with timely budget reductions in this department, so you have raised the question, have you truly done enough? I must conclude that the county has failed in this and potentially other areas in operating efficiently. The department's budget, as well as others, should be aligned with the current supply-demand environment, for government should operate as a business. Like property taxpayers in the private sector, government must make wise choices to balance the budget within the current revenue. For raising our property taxes is unacceptable. Raising taxes is putting a Band-Aid on a critical illness, inappropriate government overspending. While you must hold to sound economic principle, you must explore other revenue options besides continuing to place the bulk of the burden on property owners. Why shouldn't we expect that people who don't own property take equal ownership in this burden? I do not profess to be an economist or hold a crystal ball about our future, but folks, economic indicators point to even more severe times ahead of us. We must address the situation with creativity and wisdom. I commend Commissioner Griffith and her bold initiative to offer viable suggestions in this area. Yes, Commissioner Mitchell, Commissioner Griffith has put in action to the platform in which she ran upon, which put her in the position she currently holds. This is known as representational government. With all due respect, it might serve us all well if you would forget the good old 1990s and join us in solving the issues before us in 2011. The suggestions presented by Commissioner Griffith are not drastic. She has suggested, one, a cost-of-living adjustment for salary employees, which include a pay reduction; two, work hours for hourly employees to be adjusted to eight to four; three, eliminate duplicate services throughout the municipalities with Aridale County; and four, allow the Parks and Recreation Departments to be self-sufficient. I will add that there is certainly room within the wage and benefit structure of county employees for cost sharing specifically related to their healthcare costs and pensions. These are all things that private businesses and households have already long, have already long ago done. In these difficult economic times, my husband and I have adapted to many changes. Cost sharing with our employees have increased related to healthcare costs, yet the levels of those benefits have decreased. However, we are grateful that we still have a level of healthcare and medical insurance that will protect our family and help protect us from financial hardship if needed. I have personally taken a pay reduction. Neither one of us has a guaranteed pension with our employer. We are both blessed and thankful to have jobs and are willing to make sacrifice that we will allow our employees to continue to operate profitably during these tough economic times in order to keep those jobs. What about the people who own property but don't have jobs, or those who are living on a fixed income? I'm sure we can all agree that a tax increase will add an additional burden to their already strained budgets. Mr. Robertson, your comment about one staying at a Holiday Express does not qualify one to be an expert.
Ms. Wall.
I must finish. County government is condescending slight at every citizen and taxpayer in this county who wishes to voice their opposition to a suggested tax increase or offers suggestions what should be examined. While I may not be an expert in government by your perception, I am deemed an expert on my family's household budget, and I can emphatically say it is screaming no additional taxes. For again, raising property taxes is unacceptable and irresponsible. Political leaders often talk of making tough decisions, but the truth is rarely, that they rarely have to. Unfortunately for us, the citizens and you on the board, talk will not be enough this time. It is time to act, and you must act to ensure a prosperous future for our county and our citizens. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give you a brief, my brief minutes.
I'm gonna ask everybody to hold their comments, I'm sorry. Mr. Crawford.
Mr. Chairman, I hope I'll be your least controversial speaker here tonight, because I'm just here to say thank you. I am Rory Crawford. I'm the Executive Director of Health Reach Community Clinic in Mooresville. And for those of you who may not know us, we are the free clinic in southern Aridale County. We serve people of low income who have no insurance, and basically, it's people who have a choice between a free clinic or an emergency room. They have nowhere else to go. And we provide them medical care, dental care, chiropractic care, and a free pharmacy. And last year, you supported us with over $14,000 of allocation for us to continue our work, and so I'm here to simply say thank you for that. I'd like for you to know that our typical patient is not what you would expect. Our typical patient is a middle-aged Caucasian, employed female. She may have one or two children who are covered by state insurance companies, but she is working part-time as a cashier in your local grocery store or a waitress in your local restaurant, and she does not have coverage for herself. If it weren't for places like us, she would not have a whole lot of place that she could go to get the help she needs to keep her job and keep her family and keep her home intact. That is the value that we return to the community. I also want to tell you that I'm pleased to report that we demonstrated excellent stewardship of your money last year. We saw over forty-eight hundred patient visits representing over eighteen hundred individuals. We dispensed over ten thousand prescriptions and refills, all at no cost to our patients, and we returned an average of $6.18 in healthcare for every dollar that was donated to Health Reach. So that means that your contribution of over $14,000 generated over $89,000 in healthcare for our community. You'll get a annual report in the next coming week showing you some details on what I've told you. But again, the basic reason I'm here is simply to say, on behalf of our patients, we appreciate your support. We appreciate the concern that you represent in our community, and we appreciate your involvement in our mission to keep our area healthy and keep it economically stable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tom Simon.
Greetings, commissioners and taxpayers. I represent a small business that employs twenty-five-plus people. In the past four years, there have been no cost-of-living increases. They've actually had their pay reduced, their healthcare benefits reduced, and their employee contributions increased. Obviously, I'm against any tax increase, not even one percent. Everyone's really doing the best that they can to make ends meet. Moreover, these folks that are losing their net dollars are also the very ones that are paying the salaries and the fixed benefits that they themselves do not enjoy. And that would be those of the public sector, and I would concur with the other gal that in these economic times, we just can't afford any increase. As a matter of fact, as she also mentioned, the private sector has gotten lean, and it's time for the public sector to do the same. And one of those ways indeed would be to get rid of the fixed benefits that the private sector or the people that are paying the taxes have. And then the other is just simply to eliminate programs that are beyond the function of government, or even programs that didn't exist twenty years ago, but due to excessive funds and good days were brought about. It's time just to get rid of these and look at, again, functioning as a business and managing the money as if you were a household, and that you cannot arbitrarily increase your, the revenues that you have. As a private business, we have to compete. Our margins have gone down as it gets more competitive, and our employees have, again, they've lost. They're trying to just maintain the work in the United States, and for the public sector to increase the burden on them just isn't right. Thank you.
Okay, before Mr. Benfield speaks, I'll ask Grover Crosswhite, Ernest Strunger, Ken Journey, and Teresa. Okay, you'd come forward, please. Pardon? Claire, okay. Mr. Benfield. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the Aridale County Commissioners, and Mr. Mashmer over there has put up with me for twenty-three years. So I guess this is one reason he's getting rid of me, and he's retiring to enjoy life. I want to say a word to, I read the State's full paper, and you know, I spent sixteen years on the Board of Education in Aridale County. I helped start recreation in Aridale County, and I've been on that board, or that committee for thirty-five years. So I could say to the taxpayers of Aridale County and the people that are here tonight that our young people are critical to our society. You know, we have a hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred people in Aridale County. And you know, I traveled for a company and stayed gone considerable time, but one of the most gracious moments of my life is when I returned to Aridale County. You know, we live in a gracious county. The commissioners have been instrumental in everything that has transpired in Aridale County. And you know, we reap what we sow. We reap what we sow. You know, it's gonna be hard for us to go back in the nineties and have success as many of us had in life. But we're living in a time that everyone has to make crucial decisions. And I ask that our commissioners consider everything that comes up. But I would like to be on the top of consideration of our young people in Aridale County. You know, what they don't get in the home, they can get in recreation, which we have thousands of young people playing sports. And what they don't get there, they can get in the schools. And if they don't get it from the family life, they learn to deal with the public, and they can go ahead and be educated. And if there's one thing that it makes me real proud of is to see a young person in Aridale County that achieves or attains their goals in life. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name's Grover Crosswhite, and I'm also pastor of Cornerstone Church. And for some of you who do not know this, my daughter is Renee Griffith, who is sitting on the county commission board. So I would like to speak concerning something I have observed over the last couple of years. We have a food ministry at our church, where our church purchases food and gives it away free gratis to people without any strings attached. I have noticed that the clientele coming for food has changed considerably over the last couple of years. The clientele that comes is, was not what typically came and asked for food in the past. It's people who are carpenters, who are, who used to be job earners. And they're standing in a church food line asking for food because they are strapped and cannot bear up underneath the burden that has been laid upon them through "if you like the change we have, vote for it again." The economy, as you know, is not doing very well, and people who used to bring me money and help me in my ministry just aren't there anymore because of the need they have. It's amazing how the economy has dropped and how it's affected people. Just three or four years ago, our offerings in our church were three times what they are today. And so, and that's because people are struggling. And a tax increase would be, would hurt people. It would, it would be an issue that would cause some people, maybe not, maybe not the upper echelon people in Aridale County, but I will guarantee you that there are people that it will hurt that have been hurt by the job, the job situation. And I think there are some other ways to address some of the issues that probably would not be that detrimental even to the county employees if some people would take a little time and just examine a few things. But I'm just here to say that there is a real struggle. There's a real struggle with people that are, that are struggling just to make ends meet. It's just not like it was a few years ago. And so, that is really, I just want to portray that there is a real struggle going on. And I see it from just giving to people a hand of help. So thank you for your time, and I do appreciate every person who gives their time and works here. For the group of people here, I want to tell you this. These people on the county commission board, they give a lot more than they receive. I know personally, because I have watched my daughter spend hours and hours reading, and I know everybody else on this board does the same thing, because I've come to other county meetings. So they have, they have a tough job to do, and I appreciate all of your service, and I mean that deeply. I appreciate every one of you that give your time, because you don't get paid very much to do this. Thank you very much.
My name is Ernest Strunger. I've been involved in real estate since 1972 when I got off of active duty for the U.S. Army. I've been involved as a salesman, as a broker, as a developer, and as an investor. I lived through 1978 and '79, when interest rates at the savings and loans went to twenty-two percent in Florida, when it was impossible to get a loan. Twenty-two percent is what they, what they were charging. Shortly after that, there were no savings and loans left. They just disappeared, went out of business, went bankrupt. The economy was bad then, but from experience, I can tell you, the real estate economy today is as bad, if not worse, than it was then, and it's still heading in the wrong direction. I worked a lifetime to accumulate the real estate that I have. Most of it's free and clear. I used to be able to go to a bank and give them the deed to the property and get fifty percent loan to value, no questions asked. I can't do that today. I used to be able to sell property to people that would be an investor, that would be able to take a property and rent it out. I can't do that anymore today because the banks call the investors speculators, and they're not allowed to sell to speculators, regardless of whether they have the credit or the down payment. The situation is grave. Everything that we have in our economy today is tied to real estate. Someone buys a new home, they buy new furniture. The furniture stores are hurting. They buy new appliances, the appliance stores are hurting. As a owner of property, I have tenants who can't pay me what they agreed to pay me. So what do I do? I cut the rent. I cut their mortgage payments down to something that they can afford. This puts pressure on me. I can't pay my bills. I'm having great difficulty in paying my bills right now. And that's one of the main reasons I ask- And that's one of the main reasons I ask you not to increase the tax rate at this time. I cannot afford it. And I'm in way better shape than probably nine out of 10 people that were making a living the same way I'm making now. And I can't afford it. So please, keep the rate the way it is. Don't increase our taxes.
Mr. Jurney, before you begin, I'm going to ask Mr. Brad Pick, Mr. Ken Carty, Mr. Buddy Hemrick, Ms. Pam Christopher, if they'd come, go ahead and start moving toward the front.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Forgive me for somehow missing a list. I was wondering if it was possible to add my name to the very end, and if the board decides there's not enough time, I'd be happy to not speak.
It's a pleasure of the board to let this gentleman speak. I'm going to give you that opportunity if there's no one else here who wants to speak. I'm not going to open up the floodgate here.
I understand, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? This is the final call, is it, right here? Okay, what's your name, sir?
James Hogan.
Okay. All right, Mr. Jurney.
My name's Ken Jurney. I'm here to address the fire tax. And based on what I've heard tonight, I'm going to talk about something a little bit different, what I came to talk to you about. Because I think most people don't understand what our Commission, County Commission and Fire Departments have done with the fire tax. Five years ago, we had a fire tax, a five cent fire tax that produced insurance savings, the equivalent of homeowner insurance savings, the equivalent of about 15 cents in taxes. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Norman, and Mr. Robertson were on a commission that stuck their necks out and agreed to raise the fire tax one cent, challenged the Fire Departments to further improve their ratings. And they took that one penny and reduced our homeowners' premiums throughout this county, the equivalent of another 15 cents in property taxes. So they've taken six cents and reduced our insurance premiums 30 cents. That's a good, wise, well-managed fire tax. It's just, you've done a wonderful job with it. The Fire Departments can manage with the budget that you've agreed on this year, that it's proposed, but there's a train coming through the tunnel. There are mandates associated with these rating guidelines. And if we don't, somewhere in the near future, increase the fire tax up to seven and a half cents, seven and a half to 15 cents of that insurance savings is going away. I think y'all are very aware of it. I just think the public is not aware of it, that the County Commissioners and our Fire Commission and our Fire Departments are the ones that are responsible for this. Central is the only Fire Department in the county, in the county-based Fire Department that does not have the six insurance rating. I was with them last night at 10 o'clock, left them up there in a parking lot of a church in Love Valley. Their rating is coming up in two weeks. They'll be burning the midnight oil for the next two weeks to make sure they get that good rating. And it's just a wise investment of money. And I'd just like to let everybody in the audience know, if you're not getting the benefit of this six insurance rating that this county has earned for you, particularly through our Fire Departments with these folks up here support, you need to take advantage of it, because that's the equivalent of 30 cents in property taxes. It's what, what y'all have done for us. I appreciate you, thank you.
Yes, sir. Teresa, and I'm sorry, I still can't pronounce your last name. The Torres. Okay.
All right, I'm going to be brief, hopefully. I'm coming as a parent of two children in Aridale State's full school system, but I feel like I'm representing all 22,000 of them. When, I've been a citizen for 20 years, and I recently went to Raleigh with a group of parents to beg the representatives there not to cut that temporary sales tax that's going to cut education. They wouldn't even discuss it. They said it was a done deal and they didn't want to even open it for discussion to us. So I'm coming to you to ask to help for the school system, help out with whatever funds that there are and taxes necessarily. Nobody wants unnecessary taxes, but these taxes are necessary for education. Education is the most important reason for, for taxes. Under the Constitution, it stated that our children are guaranteed a quality education, not one that's skimmed to the bare minimum. We need to, and it's our duty to educate these kids, to protect our future, and it's better to spend more now than to have to spend later to house them in prisons, because we might need that art school back to use. There are many stores in the community, as well as all around this whole state, that have penny trays sitting beside the registers. There are very few of those trays that are ever, that aren't spilling over with coins at some point in the day. We are willing as consumers to leave extra change for a perfect stranger, but yet, we are not willing to leave those coins for our children's education. We teach our children to show respect, to have honor, and to be disciplined. We teach our children to do the harder right rather than the easier wrong. I'm asking that we do live by those same guidelines that we ask our children to, that we can teach our children to do the harder right versus the easier wrong.
Good evening. I'm a parent of two students at a school in the southern part of the county, and I just want to thank you for your service to our county. I think you've done a good job. I'm here to ask that you increase the tax. I never thought I'd be standing here saying that. I'm a conservative Republican. But my children's education is at risk, quite honestly. I went to Raleigh to lobby the lawmakers for the penny sales tax, which I think would be more fair for the citizens of our county, but they let us down. They, they don't agree. Someone has to fill this funding gap. We cannot continue on. I have looked over the budget at ISS, there is no room for cuts. There's no room for an 8% cut. Somebody's going to suffer. And it's either going to be my child's safety or one of the children's safety in this county. And there already have been safety issues with the transportation cuts. So I'm asking you tonight to make the proper decision and consider increasing the tax. Someone has to fill the gap. If you don't, our children will be uneducated and you'll be paying for them later. $33,000 a year is what we spend in this state for prisoner. And we're only asking for $5,000 per pupil per state. Aridale County is currently ranked 42nd in the nation for funding. And our county is ranked 29th out of 115 schools for academic performance. I think it's a shame that we don't spend more on our children's education. And we're, we're going to have a crisis. It, it won't be too long. And just lastly, I want to say, if you have a personal political agenda with your vote tonight, shame on you. These, these citizens of this county elected you to do the right thing by this county, and I'm telling you to educate our children. Thank you.
Mr. Pick.
Yes, yes, my name's Brad Pick. It's P-I-C-K, I'm not the movie actor. I think I need a little levity, maybe some of y'all do too. Commissioners, fellow citizens of Aridale County, yeah, I appreciate y'all too. I voted for all you, all you Commissioners, and I appreciate y'all and what you do, and I know you've got a tough job. I didn't come here to raise cane tonight, but I mainly come to be informed. I need to understand, I need to understand why raising taxes is the only recourse. I need to understand. And I don't exactly, because I don't know all the facts, but I need to understand. I don't want my taxes raised, okay? I, I was riding in my truck not too long ago with a fellow, his dad happened to be from Ohio, Mahoning County, Ohio, and his wife has a county job up there. And he was complaining that she was going to have to take a 3% cut. Now, I don't know how this cut was in her pay, it might have been in her benefits or something like that. But I listened to this for a while, and then I started to thinking, and I had to say, well, why don't you add a zero behind that and double it, okay? I've been working on 60% less of what my income was. I'm a general contractor, as was already said, the housing industry, real estate's been decimated here in Aridale County and across our country. And I don't see how I can stand much more. So that's what I'm asking. Just please, help me understand why. I need to do more. It's already a heavy burden, and I know it's not just me. I'm, I'm speaking for a lot of people in Aridale County. Thanks for your time.
Mr. Hemrick. Before he begins, is Ms. Christopher, is she up front? Okay, thank you, ma'am. I'll ask Mark Hager, Karen Carty, Eddie Guy, if they'd come ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Hemrick.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you for a little bit this afternoon. My name is Buddy Hemrick. I'm just an old retired senior citizen here in Aridale County, property owner, trying to get by. I wanted to address to you this evening that I think there's still room for cuts in this budget that's being proposed for 2011, 2012. I would like for you to go back and revisit the school systems budget. We've heard all about cutting jobs of assistant teachers and secretaries in the school office. Should there not be some cuts on Ray Street? We got too many employees in the school system who are on Ray Street making six-figure salaries. I haven't heard of any of them being cut. We have, I think the last figure I got on it now, they have cut the IAF teachers down to about 30. For the ones that don't know, IAF is a instructional facilitator. They are certified teachers, but they don't teach students, they teach teachers. I thought they all had a certified teaching degree from college and didn't need that in the classroom, but I guess they do, I don't know. If we put those 30 teachers or whatever's left now into the classrooms, for these teachers that have been laid off, we'd be getting production out of teachers instead of them just taking up the space on the board. Also, there's people in the school system that jobs have been created for, just to give them a job, and they created a position for them just so they could keep them on a payroll. Another thing I'd like to suggest to the school system, the people that are here from the school system, play your football games on Saturday afternoon instead of Friday night. And look at all the power utilities, you'd say, not having to burn all those big lights on Friday night. You could play it on Saturday afternoon. Those are things I believe you could do in the budget. I go to the library quite often. I was over there one afternoon with my granddaughter, and there was four librarians sitting around there for about 30 minutes, just gacking with one another. I think you could cut the staff over at that library. And I would suggest that you do like the hospitals do with the pink ladies, ask these friends of the library to volunteer to come in. I'm sure that they could volunteer, come in for a little while and do just as good as those ladies I see sitting around just talking. I love a ball game, I grew up playing ball. But the Parks and Recreation Department is a luxury. It's not a government operation or mandated government operation, it's a luxury that we have for the citizens of this county. And last year, I believe they, their income was about $300,000, and their expenses was over a million. That's not very productive. I think they all have to charge fees and rates to pay for the whatever programs that they're running. They can't make a profit or make, at least break even on what they're doing, then we don't need that service. If times was good and we were doing real well in the economy, then I'd say, yes, we could fund a recreation department. Another place we could do cuts, we got inspectors in the planning department.
Mr. Hemrick, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up pretty soon, you have five minutes.
All right. Anyway, we got inspectors in the inspection department installing light fixtures, and they're getting paid for the same job as if they were doing inspections. Either pay them what a laborer would get to put those fixtures in, or then they go out to find another job, because a house is not going to pick up for another three, four years, maybe longer. So if we don't have a job for them for their, whatever they're doing, then we need to let them go and find them another employment somewhere. Thank you.
Ms. Christopher is next, I believe, Mr. Carty.
Am I getting in front of somebody?
Yeah, I'm afraid so. Ms. Christopher.
I got, excuse me.
He got left out, he got left out of the last group.
You're right, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'm okay.
Yeah, come ahead, Mr. Carty.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to stand up for the taxpayer. That's my, I don't have a lot of statistics, fortunately for everyone. And I would like to say that so many of the needs and voice here tonight are legitimate, they're good, we support them all. But I also work in real estate, and you've heard the real estate perspective tonight. And I want to say, I'm not going to talk about real estate, but I'm going to talk about so many people I work with who aren't in real estate, who have lost their jobs or have been downsized or whatever, and I see them losing their homes. And the, the message is, it's just not really good out there for a lot of people. It's not that great on Main Street. Any of you guys that have a business know that. So in principle, I don't want to see, I don't want to see the public sector growing or even maintaining while the private sector shrinks. That's, that's my message. You just, I don't see how that, you know, I don't see how that can work. Thank you.
Now, Ms. Christopher, I'm sorry, your turn.
That's all right, I don't mind waiting. I spent 30 years waiting in the classroom. Mr. Chairman, board members, and Aridale County citizens, this lectern is too tall for me. So I will move so that I can at least speak into the microphone and see you. I'm a member of the Aridale County, yay, Aridale County, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. On that board, I represent thousands of people who are not much shorter than me, all of the children of Aridale County. That's the one and only reason that I am here speaking and that I am appealing before you today. Why aren't those children here, speaking for themselves? Because if you look at the shape of that county that's up there, they are playing in each quadrant of that county tonight. They're playing their sports. They have volunteer coaches, they have volunteer people that are helping with all of their, all of their teams, and they're out there playing their little hearts out. They're learning how to win, and they're learning how to lose. And folks, we're... And folks, where else can we learn that kind, am I, can you hear me? Where else can we learn that kind of life lesson in such a wonderful place? Where else are we going to see the smiles of all of our children, except in a place like that? As a veteran of our school system, I know all too well how many cuts have been made, and many of those cuts were in physical education. Our children are learning to sit at home and watch television, they need to be outside playing so that when they grow up and they get tall, they don't look like me. That's a fact. I beg you, with everything that is in me, please do not cut our parks and recreation. It is not a luxury, as one of our speakers said. The only luxury in this room tonight is getting two or three minutes above your speaking time.[664.82][664.82](APPLAUSE). I would like to see a smile on each one of your faces before I leave this lectern. Because that's what you're giving to our children in Iredell County by allowing them to play sports after school and not have to worry about an end of grade test. Please keep our Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this time to talk. And indeed, I'm starting to feel like my dad, and I never thought I would say that. When, growing up as a kid, how many of you all remember when you were sixteen years old and you would say, "Man, I'd like to have a new car." Remember those? Or, "We should buy this," or "We should buy that, why are we only doing this?" And then my dad saying time and time again, "It's because, do you make any money?" Say, "Well, no, we'll go get a job." Right? Everybody remember those? We heard earlier from Civitas, great people speaking, that here in Iredell County, our government growth has grown, what, thirty-three percent, and our private sector is five percent. Now, is that right? I wouldn't think so at all. Now, I have two kids, also in Iredell State's full schools, and I am an educator, two. Now, I've got a sixteen-year-old, those same questions that I had when I was, when I was a kid, they're asking too. "When can I have a car?" Right now, bless her heart, she has a car and the air conditioner doesn't work. It's pretty hot. But should you buy a new car, or should you fix the air conditioner? Those are the same kinds of questions. We are facing a crisis, not just here, statewide, our state is now four billion in debt. As of 2014, as some of the Commissioners here have already heard and already know that it's coming, all fifty states are going to have to make up for the $500 billion in Medicaid cuts. The only way to do this, that anybody can legitimately come up with, is property taxes. That's coming up. I mean, that is not something, "Well, I wish it would go away, it would be nice." But it's coming. So should kids play? Yes, they sure should. And they do. I enjoy going outside and playing with my kids, and I try to all I can. But when we look at the crisis that is going on now, we've just heard today on the news, many of you heard, that six point two million Americans, forty-five point one percent of all unemployed workers in this country, have been jobless for six months. How many in here know people that are out of work? How many people in here know people that are either barely in their homes or have already lost theirs? So it is great to get out and play baseball, and I love it. I am a big-time Wake Forest fan. And I love to go to every game I can, and my kids have played. But then again, I'm starting to feel terrible, it's like I'm a kid again, and there's my dad speaking. "Son, do you have the money? Can you afford it? Can you afford paying, what, a property tax increase of fifty cent on every one hundred dollars for every hundred dollars on your property?" And so that is why I sternly say that not only can you not raise taxes, but you better start looking at a way to start lowering taxes to get ready for what's coming in 2014.[901.01][901.01](APPLAUSE).
Honorable Commissioners, I know each one of you, like another speaker, I have supported each one of you, and after I say what I've got to say tonight, I hope I can still consider you my friends. I have worked, where I can retire now, I'll be sixty-six in September. I still work full-time. I haven't had a raise in years, my benefits have been reduced three or four years in a row. I'm driving a company car that has an excess of three hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. I have worked in, for, and around agribusiness retail outlets for forty-two years. I have two outlets that will close this month, they simply cannot suck it up anymore, they're going out of business. Many jobs will be lost. I have store managers that are working twelve, fifteen, and eighteen hours a day because they cannot hire staff to spread the workload around, they have to stay at night and do it themselves. I literally have stores that have not had heat or air conditioning in their stores for the last two or three years, they cannot pay the bill. So Commissioners, don't tell me you can't find anywhere else to cut. I was not sure I was going to speak today till I was raking hay in ninety-degree heat and a third-generation welfare recipient rode by that field three or four times in his great big huge vehicle, and threw out high-dollar sports drink cans and McDonald's papers in my field that we, the public, had bought. I know his mother coached him how to get on the dole, but this travesty we call social services here in this county. I go to church with people and know people who dance all night, go to Canada hunting, go to the beach three and four times a summer at the expense of the county and the state and the federal taxpayer, who live better than we do. I wasn't going to mention the department, but since I've heard it lobbied here tonight, I'm going to mention Parks and Recreation. Two or three years ago, I was in that office at ten or ten-thirty in the morning on a matter of simple routine business. There were three men and two women in that office, it was ten-thirty in the morning. Two of them were eating breakfast, two of them had the lunch menu spread out, deciding where and what they were going to eat for lunch. And I guess it was the boss, because he had on a tie, literally had his feet on a desk reading the Goth Digest. Now, when you ask, "Where can we cut?" Again, four out of five of those could have been fired, and there's where you can start cutting. You don't see that? That kind of thing's going on in the private sector. Commissioners, I'm here to ask you, please, not one single, the honest, honorable, working people that are trying to do right and raise their children on a stretched, limited budget, have had all they can handle. Let some of these people that are asking for more money, go out and do like the rest of us, try to get a job, pay their own way.
Karen Cardy.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Karen Cardy, and I'm a resident of Iredell County and a Realtor with Keller Williams Realty. I'm here to speak against a proposed rise in the property taxes of Iredell County. First, I'd like to point out that many people in this room receive a paycheck from the county, or funds for their organization, or their employer receives county funds. They are in one way or another dependent on government funds. So it's natural, in this downturn, that they would want the shortfall to be made up. I understand that. I represent one of the other one hundred and forty-nine thousand people in Iredell County who are not dependent on county money, but are providing the tax money that goes to the county. If you could be in my place, Mr. Chairman, it would break your heart. I list and sell property here, and so many of my listings or sales either involve foreclosure, they are short sales, or the people know they're going to lose their homes if they don't sell pretty quickly. For those who are barely managing to stay in their homes, a property tax rise will be the last straw. It will compound the problem of housing prices dropping by causing more houses to go on the market, and also excluding buyers from buying, it will price them out. You might be deluding yourselves that since values have gone down and been reassessed, people won't really be paying more. When private business is down so far, salaries have been cut and people have lost their jobs, no new taxes are acceptable. People with businesses have experienced a thirty percent reduction of their income, fifty percent, and I've even heard sixty percent, we heard sixty percent a few minutes ago. I know that the schools are experiencing cuts from federal and state, and are looking for the county to make up some of the difference. I know that county employees have not had a raise in three years. However, tax-paying citizens in the private sector of this county cannot make up the difference for the schools, nor to enable raises in county government salaries. On the contrary, schools must find a way to do more with less. Private schools do more for less per pupil, we all know that. Public schools will have to find their way to do this. They are going to have to figure out what are the wants and what are the needs, and just like in our families in hard times, the wants have to be cut. With economic conditions as they are, government overall must be cut.
Okay, I apologize if things got ahead of me a little bit. I have John Kinley, Andrea Kinley, Randy Redman, R.C. Redman, and David Boone. A few folks should proceed toward the front, please.
My name is John Kinley, I've been a resident here in Iredell County for about thirty-two years, been in, have had numerous small businesses, so I know what it is to work within a budget and struggle. And I would like to say that taxation with representation is overrated. I'm just kidding with you guys. You guys work hard, and I know, you know, this is a tough job to deal with this, this economy right now that we're in. But pretty much everything has been said, when you come up at the end like this, a lot of people have said things that I would have liked to have said. But I think what we need to do is we need to, and I feel sorry for these schoolteachers and the education system and listening to these people tonight, and I would like to see the schoolteachers get a raise, I really would. But the schoolteachers are the ones, they're suffering with what they're making. I'd like to see the administrators take a cut, and I'd like to see less administrators.[1412.63][1412.63](APPLAUSE). You know, when anything gets too top-heavy, what happens? It's going to topple. And I'll tell you, the math doesn't work here, folks, it never really has worked. You know, the private sector's been carrying this country for a long time, and it's gotten now where, you're seeing it all over the country, the math is catching up with us. It's caught up, it's past us. So I ask you folks to listen to these people that are hurting out here, I see it every day. I've got a number of businesses, that I've got people coming in that are really hurting, and they just can't stand one more stone put on them at this time.
My name's Andrea Kinley, and I am a mortgage broker. And I have spent the last four years listening to people that are losing their homes and displacing their families, and a home is where a family builds roots. And their budgets are teetering so tightly that one more item on their budget is going to make them fall off the edge. You've heard a number of people speak about real estate, and it takes very little for someone that is on the edge to lose their home. And statistically, over seventy percent of all the homes that are selling, not only in our, not only in our county, but across the country, are distressed properties in some way. So I am also going to ask that we have no tax increase, simply because that's one more thing to, to hurt the housing industry and to hurt the families of America.
Randy Redman?
I'd like to decline.
Okay. R.C. Redman?
I'd like to decline.
David Boone?
I prepared five minutes of remarks, but I can make it a good bit shorter because a lot of the folks, good folks, have already spoken, have said some of the things I was going to say. Ms. Wall let it off, did it much more articulately and eloquently than I could have, maybe came a little stronger than I would, but said a lot of things I was kind of thinking. I'd just like to reiterate a couple of facts, or correct a couple of facts. We hear, we've heard things asserted as facts in the news media, even by some members of this board and by others, that aren't exactly accurate. They may be technically accurate, but they're a little bit misleading. One that we hear constantly is that Iredell County has a very low tax rate. At one time, we were in the bottom ten. This year, seventeen counties have a lower rate than us, so we're slipping. But the reason our tax rate is that low is not because we're one of the most frugal counties in the state, it's not because we're spending less than other counties in the state, it is because we have a better tax base than many other counties. We're fortunate to have more commercial and industrial property than many more rural counties, we have a good bit of residential property, especially in the Lake Norman area, that has a very high assessed value. Just to give you an example, Yadkin County has a tax rate of seventy-four cents, and yet they raise less tax money per capita than Iredell County at a forty-four point five percent rate. If you take the amount of tax money per capita that we raise, we are almost exactly at the state average of the nine counties that surround us, four of them tax more, five tax less. We're right in the middle, we are an average county, so we're not one of the lowest-spending counties in the state where there's nothing to cut. One other thing I hear asserted sometimes is that our school spending is at the very bottom per pupil. It is true that the state of North Carolina's allocation formulas short-change counties like Iredell in favor of so-called low-wealth counties, I would like to change those formulas too, but you people have nothing to do with that. As far as the county appropriation for schools, current expense appropriation, we are about the state average. If one considers the capital spending for schools, and considers the debt service on bonds for school buildings, we're spending considerably more per cap, or per pupil than the state average. People, a couple of speakers have mentioned the Civitas study that demonstrated that county government employment had increased faster than private sector employment and population growth. Our tax collections per capita, now this is per capita and corrected for inflation, per capita and inflation-adjusted dollars, we're spending about forty percent more than we were in the nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine budget year, that's taking inflation and taking population growth into account. County government has grown, not as bad as the federal government, but it has grown. A lot of people have alluded to the economy we face, I see the same thing, most of my, many of my customers are out of work, they're working short time, they're struggling, just like all the other people we've spoken about. In a time of big government, when government has grown, in a time when the economy is like it is now, I just think it would be unconscionable to raise taxes, and the budget Mr. Mashburn proposed increases county spending by about seven million dollars. Our debt service is declining by about a million dollars, so the way I look at it, it contains about eight million dollars in new spending. If this board just voted to spend exactly what it spent last year, did what it did last year, that would cover a whole lot of what you need to do to keep the tax rate the same. That would go a long ways toward doing it, and I think with a little bit of political will and a little bit of hard work, you can maintain the tax rate without any drastic draconian cuts in the services that are rendered to the county. And I know I've run over my- And I know I've run over my time, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you indulging me. I'll say, I, I know how difficult your job is. I'm well aware of it, and be quite honest, this year, I'm kind of glad I'm sitting on this end of the podium instead of that end. But I, I mean these remarks in, in a constructive manner, and I certainly hope that it, it helps commissioners to, to see what the will of the people is and to help, help hold the property tax rate down. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Holland, before you speak, I'll ask Ben Shelton, Scotty Jones, Skip McCall, and DeeDee Pavlik, could go ahead and move forward. All right, go ahead, Mr. Holland.
I'd just like to begin by saying that tough times require tough decisions, and I don't envy the decisions you have to make, but I urge you to make them. In recent comments that's been made about our county, I've heard that surrounding counties have a, a higher tax rate, and for that reason, we should raise ours. It seems to be a sentiment of many. I urge you to, to not, to be different from those counties and keep our tax rate where it's at. In talking recently with some government employees, some of those county and state employees, they all reiterated the fact that they haven't received a raise lately, in some of them two, three, and four years. I would like to say, though, to them that many in the private sector have not received a raise either. In fact, many have lost their health insurance benefits, they've lost their retirements, many have even lost their jobs, and so ensuing, they've lost their homes and their life fortunes. Recently, Mr. Mitchell was quoted as saying, "No one applauded him the last time he was on the board and cut our tax rate from 59 to 45." I'm pretty sure I applauded those efforts, but what he failed to mention was evaluations at about that same time took a sharp increase, and so the total amount of taxes that people paid never changed, often going up. So there was nothing to really applaud. I would like to say that nothing should be off the table. As I said, tough times require tough decisions. I, I myself have children that, that participate in Parks and Recreation, and I, I know for a fact that there is much waste in that department. Our schools is the biggest employer in the county, and I know for a fact, as my children attend schools, that there, there are a lot of things that's wasted, and our tax dollars are going for something that we're, we're not receiving anything for. They're in the business of education, not in the business of retiring people and, and paying high salaries to administrators. Mr. Journey mentioned the fire department. I applaud our fire service in this county. We have some extraordinary men and women who volunteer their time and put their lives on the line daily, and I applaud those efforts. But there is waste in our fire system. To give you an example, one thing that I've noticed, several of the departments in the north end recently purchased six-man cab trucks. These trucks cost, on average, $150,000 more than the two-man cabs trucks sitting right beside them, and do nothing more, have no more firefighting capacity than, than the, than the cheaper truck. It's a waste of money, and all because someone decided they wanted a truck like their neighbor in the department got. I say this not to, to talk down at our fire departments, it's because there is waste, but no one's willing to step up and, and to say no. And I urge you, as commissioners, there are areas you can cut, our taxes are, and look after our money a little better in all of these departments, and I urge you to do it. I applaud Commissioner Griffin here, who came up with some new ideas, though not popular ideas. She is willing to think outside the box, and I urge you not to take the easy way out and raise our taxes, but to look for areas in every department in this county. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for the opportunity, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate you doing the job. Mr. Mitchell asked me about 10 years ago to run for that, and I think it's the best decision ever made to not do it. It just wouldn't be for me. Y'all have a terribly, terribly hard job. I think everything's been said that could be said about that we, that there's a, certainly a lot of people that don't want to see our taxes raised, and we have reasons for that. You know, when things get good in our economy, it seems like businesses in general will hire more people and do more, and they get a little bit fat. And then when things slim, that things get tough, then you, the word comes out, they're downsizing. I think that's what we're hearing tonight, is people say that we have to look at a way that we downsize with, with less dollars. So much has been said about the other things, and I don't have all the figures that some of the people had. I didn't want to address a little bit about education. I think education is certainly one of the most important things we can do. I have a daughter that's a first-year teacher down on the eastern part of the state. I don't know what you can do about it, but from a, from an outsider looking in, and I go to North Middle School every Friday as a mentor, meet with those kids, hear the problems with the, the students and the fact that they don't have any family, that's really the breakdown in America, and what goes on is the, the family unit itself and the integrity that's there. I guess this is out of the box, but to me, for, I, I have three student, three children that have graduated from Iredell County school systems, and one's finished at Virginia Tech, and one's finished at Lenora Ryan, and one's at East Carolina. They got a good education in the Iredell Statesville school system. But if the teachers, and I think this is all across the country, if they don't have a way to start discipling the students there, there's no way they can teach them that, anything. I don't think it matters how much money you put into the system. So maybe that's not really what it's about tonight, but it's, as an outsider looking in and going into the schools, that's the problem. They can't educate if you can't discipline, and there is no discipline. So far as government itself, I think there's a basic distrust from you start. It's probably the greatest at the federal level and then down to the state. We've certainly had our issues in state government the last few years of, of wasted money and embezzlement and all the things that go on, and then there's still a little bit of a basic distrust in county government. A lot of services are provided that we take for granted, but I know y'all probably didn't have anything to do with it, but when I ride down the interstate and I see where all these trees have been cut, and somebody told me we spent $1 million cutting trees down along the interstate while we still got potholes in the road, I really can't see from a, that, that just says something about government, about what are we really doing with the money? And so I guess I would end, my light is red, that we have to think about what we do with the money in the government. That's what we have to do in our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a hard job, and I appreciate your service to our country. My name is Scotty Joines. My husband and I bought a home in Statesville just last September. Jason is disabled Army veteran, and we have four children, three still in the home and one in college. I'm also in college to obtain my first bachelor's degrees so I can supplement our income. We love Statesville. It's such a beautiful place to live. We love it here. Our son plays sports with the rec. department, which he also loves. Many months, we don't have enough grocery money to eat proper meals. Ramen noodles are a staple at our home. We have no savings and regularly overdraw our bank account for food and gas to get to church and school, but we still consider ourselves blessed. Since moving to Statesville, we have had to pull our children out of public schools due to violence and bullying and lack of challenging programs. Homeschooling adds another financial burden, along with a new law in April that caused us to have to pay $50 a child over five for health insurance through Medicaid. I have no insurance at all for myself. I say all this so let you understand that many families, especially disabled veterans, people on fixed incomes, we just simply can't afford a tax increase. There's no place in our budgets for it. We understand the need for finding, funding for public schools, and having been involved in schools in California when we were in the Army, I can say honestly that North Carolina schools are above and beyond other states on all levels. They're pretty great compared to other states. Nevertheless, it's our experience and opinion that since lenient discipline and psychologists have replaced prayer in schools, that there is more violence and lower standards. We don't know what the solution is, but we know that we can't afford, afford a tax increase. We also know that God says in His Word that "If my people who are called by My name humble themselves and pray and seek My face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear their, hear from them from heaven and forgive their sin and will heal their land." Thank you for listening. God bless you.
Mr. Chair, members of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, certainly citizens of Iredell County, thank you for the opportunity, for allowing us to come before you tonight and address the budget. I speak to you on behalf of the oldest, the largest civil rights organization in the world, the NAACP. I also speak to you on behalf of the many children across this county. First of all, I want to thank you as a board and as a county for all that you've done for education over the years. I served on the Iredell Statesville School Board for eight years and certainly had personal experience in what it takes to try to balance a budget and meet all the needs of the county. I certainly don't envy the position that you're in, and there's no doubt that we've done a lot for education in this county. We built new facilities, we've renovated old facilities, and we continue to allocate a substantial amount of money toward education while we're servicing a debt of about, I think, $19 million a year in addition to the budget. So you've done a lot, and we appreciate that. However, we find ourselves in a position and a predicament that none of us asked for and none of us contributed to. We find ourselves in an economic situation that was created by certainly being dragged into two unnecessary wars, by certainly providing a prescription, prescription drug plan that was unfunded, and also by the greed that run amok on Wall Street while our leaders in Washington turned their blind eye and a deaf ear to what was going on. So none of us here tonight are to blame for the situation or the circumstances that we'll face. That's what I call trickle-down economics. As a matter of fact, the mess that was made in Washington has trickled down to the state and certainly trickled down to the county. And I realize that you're also facing unfunded mandates from the state as they continue to pass the buck on you and expect you to certainly fill the gaps in fundings that they are neglecting to. So your job is not easy. However, the Iredell Statesville school system has done a fantastic job with the resources and funds that they've had. A school system that has ranked in the top 10, and even though that ranking is slipping, but they have ranked in the top 10 while being 114th out of 115 school systems in terms of per pupil funding across this state. Now, certainly, that's not your fault. It is attributed to, as Mr. Boone mentioned, to the formula that is used, that the state, that the state uses to fund education. So certainly, we're not here to place blame tonight, but I'm here to appeal to you is that in spite of the economic conditions that we're dealing with, and there's no doubt that we have got to find ways to cut and balance this budget. But in cutting our budget and in balancing the budget, there are some things that are just essential. While you deal with balancing your budget, many of us deal with balancing our own personal budget, and we're having to do some belt-tightening ourselves. However, while we are doing the belt-tightening, some things are necessary and some things are essential. Certainly, at home, we don't cut off the lights. We don't cut off the gas. We don't cut off the food. But when we continue to cut education, it's as though we're cutting off the lifeline to not only the future of our children, but also to the future of our community and our society. The Iredell Statesville school system over the past couple of years has experienced significant cuts in their budget from the state level as well as the local level. Certainly, we cannot continue to cut the budget and cut the funding for education and still expect our teachers and administrators to provide what is mandated by the North Carolina State Constitution, a sound and basic education for all of our children. How long can we perform at that level that we've been performing if we continue to cut the resources? How long? Not long. We cannot continue to perform and educate children that will be productive citizens in our society. And I hear that we can't, shouldn't raise taxes, and I hear that we got to continue to cut, but the fact is...
Mr. McCall, you're at five minutes, sir. You need to wrap it up.
Okay, I will wrap it up, but I think I'm right in time with most other people that have spoken.
I'll give everybody the luxury of five minutes, sir.
All right. We cannot continue to cut. We must say enough is enough and fund education to ensure that every child has a quality, sound, basic education. There must be some reason and some sense of moral and what's fair and just to the kids and to the future of this county. And certainly, if we cut today, we may save a little money today, but we'll be just like the Midas commercial. We may, we'll either have to pay now or we'll pay later for those kids that fall through the cracks due to the lack of education. So again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I ask that you really consider the kids of this county as you finalize this budget, and make sure that we save our schools, save our children, save our students, and save the future of our community and our nation. Thank you.
Hello. My name is DeeDee Pavlik. I live in the southern part of Mooresville, and it always seems to me when, whenever talking about writing a budget in government, that the emotions come out, and it seems to be said that we can either raise taxes or we'll have to cut teachers or the police or whatever. But I'm here to say, those cannot be the only two options. You might have to go line by line, but I know there are places to save before you even consider cutting teachers or their salaries. Unfortunately, those of us who are against tax increases are made out to be against teachers or the police or whatever, but I can tell you now, my whole family in Michigan is made up of teachers, and my brother is a police officer in Texas, so that is certainly not the case with me. I believe teachers have one of the most important jobs in this country. They are shaping the children who will be the future of this country, and there is nothing more important than that. But I'm also an American who is sick and tired of paying more and more taxes to a government who just continues to waste it. Renee Griffith, I applaud you. You've come up with several proposals that are very simple for cutting spending, and I think that is just the beginning. I think you all need to listen to Renee and work with her to come up with creative ways of saving money. Please, we need you to come up with some creative ways of saving money. We beg you to stop wasting our hard-earned money and then just taking more after you've wasted what you already have. As it is said, the government is for the people and by the people, but we have lost sight of that in this country. You work for us. The money you have is my money, and I expect you to spend it as wisely as I do. Thank you.
Mike Udi, and James Hogan. These are the two final speakers. If you gentlemen come forward, please.
I won't take a whole lot of time reiterating what other people have already said, but times are tough. I own a small business. I've had to lay people off. I've cut salaries on the ones that I had left. I've taken salary cuts myself every year for the last five years. Those of us that live in the real world knows that this recession really started way back about 2006. And one thing that really needs to be kept in mind is that there are hundreds of economists that say that we're not to the bottom yet, that the worst is very likely ahead of us. So issue number one is there's just no money. Number two, I am of the opinion, and I think a lot of people are, is that there's really no need either. I've lived in the same house for twenty years, and my property taxes have gone up forty percent over that time period. Now, twenty years ago, we still had fire protection, we still had police protection, and believe it or not, the schools even operated. And I'm not sure they didn't operate better than they do now. And I take exception with a lot of what I'm hearing, that dollars equal quality when it comes to education. That's not true. You can prove it with statistics all over the place.[684.01][684.01][applause] And those of us that are speaking against having to spend more money for public government, let me reemphasize that we don't hate children and we're not against education. Again, if money equals good education, then Washington DC would have the best schools in the country, and they have the worst. And by the way, prisons are full also.[714.23][714.23][applause] But third, you know, in bad times, if you take a pay cut, your salary goes down and therefore you automatically don't have to pay as much income tax. If you don't have any money, you can't buy anything, so you're not spending as much on sales tax. But if you happen to have the misfortune it may be to have accumulated a little bit of property and times get very bad, all of a sudden, for some reason, you pay more taxes because you own something? This is not only wrong-headed, but it is just the most cruel type of burden that you can put on people. People say you got a tough job. You do, but it can be done, and everybody can economize, everybody can find places to do things more efficiently. You don't have to throw the baby out with the bathwater. So I encourage you to cut taxes. We really do need it.
James Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for adding me as a late addition, and thank you to all the Board of Commissioners for your service, Mr. Mashburn as well. My name is James Hogan. I've lived in Iredell County now for twenty-one years. I was raised here. I graduated from North Iredell High School. My first job was bagging groceries at the Harmony Galaxy with John Ray Campbell. After I graduated from college, I came back to Statesville, married my high school sweetheart, and taught at South Iredell High School for four years. My wife has taught in the Iredell Statesville School System for ten years, and now we're raising a beautiful girl here. We live in Statesville, near the Statesville Soccer Park complex, and after realizing the minority I'm in tonight, I'm going to ask the board to buy me a lawnmower because it looks like I'm going to mow a lot of soccer fields as a volunteer in the future. I mean that seriously. I'll pay for the gas. But I'm here to urge you tonight to adopt a revenue-neutral tax base. Don't tell my father I'm saying that. He would probably kill me. This is my first time here, in fact, and I felt moved as a citizen of Iredell County, as a member of the great citizenry of the Old North State, and as an American, to demonstrate my responsibility to help pay for the sayings that I believe in in this county. Our state budget cuts to education have hurt the classrooms. We've had three years of them, and they are quickly moving south again. And if the government, the governor, excuse me, does not veto this bill, or if her veto is overridden, the responsibility is ours to continue the great education, and that tradition has been around for a long time here in Iredell County, that we provide to our young people. This county raised me to be the leader that I am. The people here, in my church and in my community, are the people that brought me up to speak my mind and to stand up for those who don't have what I have. Somehow or another, I've actually made more money each and every year over the last eight years since I've graduated from college, and I feel it is my duty, my privilege, and my responsibility as a citizen to pay more and to do more for our government. Ask any member of the Greatest Generation what Americans gave up during World War II. They didn't complain that just because they had to go without flour or food or whatever it is that they wanted, that the soldiers should have to go up and fight a war without it. I've never met a person in my life who's left Iredell County because the tax rate was so high. And just because you've witnessed poor performance from a county employee doesn't mean that you need to cut their job. It means that you need to pay more to hire someone better.[981.26][981.26][laughter] And I say that with all seriousness. I left my job in education to make more money. I'm not proud to say that, but it's the truth. I was nominated to be Teacher of the Year at South Iredell High School, an award I declined because I left teaching. My AP English Language scores were the highest in the county the second year I taught that class. I felt I was a qualified teacher. So if you don't think you have quality public employees, I can tell you firsthand, it's because you don't pay them enough. And if you cut administrators or people who are making over a hundred thousand dollars a year, you'll have to call a real estate agent because I'm sure those people will be selling their houses too. Please take me seriously. I stand here ready to do my part, whether that's as a volunteer or as a taxpayer doing more for his county that he loves because my family is here and I want my daughter to grow up here and have a bright future, the same future that was given to me thanks to you.
Okay, the public hearing is closed at this point. I have received a lot of phone calls from a lot of people making comments about the county budget. So at this point, not to offer a defense, but to understand that everybody understands the proposal that is on the table, I'm going to call upon our county manager at this point to make some comments concerning the budget that he has recommended so everybody will know what he has presented to this board, what compelled him to present this budget, and some history behind the budget in the preceding years. Mr. Mashburn.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On May the seventeenth, I presented to the Board of Commissioners a recommended spending plan for FY twelve in the amount of a hundred and fifty-seven million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. To adequately fund this plan, it would be necessary to set the ad valorem tax rate at fifty cents per hundred dollars in valuation. The plan is indeed an increase of seven point two million over the current year's budget, but the current year's budget is fifteen million dollars less than the budget of FY nine or the pre-recession as it affected Iredell County. When the board adopted the '09 budget, it did so in anticipation of continued growth in our tax base, both real estate and sales taxes. As we all know, by the end of the first quarter of that year, it was evident that our base was eroding, especially our sales taxes, and sales taxes made up almost twenty percent of our revenue. Also, we started seeing our revenue from fees related to the construction industry falling rapidly. In November of that year, the Board of County Commissioners took action to reduce the spending plan in order to match the revised revenue estimates and voted to reduce the budget by two point four million dollars. Things continued to get worse, and in the third quarter of that same fiscal year, the board took further action to reduce the budget and cut another seven point eight million dollars from the budget. These cuts were made without reducing the appropriation to schools, which make up over fifty percent of the county's budget. Everyone was hopeful that the recession would be short-lived and that revenue would soon be returned to the previous recession numbers. But as we all know, that did not happen, and as employment continued to drop, so did our revenue. The board has continued to reduce the budget each year since, each year since until now the budget is down to a hundred and fifty million dollars, almost back to what it was in '07, in the fiscal year '07. These drastic reductions haven't been without consequences. To begin with, our per pupil expenditure has dropped from fourteen hundred and sixty-six dollars per pupil in current expense to twelve hundred and ninety-three dollars per pupil. This has been a reduction of about twelve percent. We all know that at the same time the state of North Carolina has made major cuts as well as put the county as well, but the county would never have the resources to make up for the loss of state funds. The proposed budget would take the per pupil appropriation back up to almost thirteen hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which is still less than what it had been approved by the board back in FY '09. Not only have the schools seen drastic reductions, but every county department has likewise been hit very hard. Needed capital items such as ambulances and patrol cars have been taken out of the budget completely. Needed upgrades to information technology systems has been delayed to the point that many of our systems are antiquated and cannot be serviced. County employees, the very ones that we rely on to carry out the important functions of government, have seen reductions in benefits and salaries two straight years and are now facing another year without any increase. Yet the workload of almost all of them, and if you look at the statistics, it's staggering how much it has increased just since 2005. They have increased as well as their cost of living. Where we have seen reductions in the workload, cuts in personnel have been made, either by eliminating the positions or not funding them until the demand returns. Drastic cuts started back in '09 and even continue with the present budget proposal. Already, over four million dollars has been cut from what was requested by the agencies and the departments that receive funding from the county. Further cuts will have consequences, and I'm hopeful the Commissioners will consider those consequences before taking action to reduce the budget further. The proposed budget does not take us back to the pre-recession levels, but it does recognize that without some upward movement, further budgets will be expected to make up for the consequences of delayed action. To continue to go deeper into the fund balance will only mean steeper tax increases in the future. Having a tax rate at one of the lowest twenty percent in the state and the lowest in the region was appropriate when the county was growing and revenues were increasing to meet our needs. That may no longer be the case, and as the board is aware, because of the reduction in property values, it will take a tax rate of at least forty-seven point one cents to be revenue-neutral, which is the starting point for building a spending plan that is adequate to meet the needs of the county. And again, I have statistics to show just from 2005 where a lot of increases in the demand for the services are, the numbers are there for the board to review.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. Are there any comments from any board members at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
When the government looks at its revenue source, the taxpayers, and says, "We know you are surviving on less, but we cannot survive on less," is disrespectful to the hand that feeds government. It appears that some think asking county government to look at ways to cut costs is somehow irresponsible. When citizens begin to take a look at how their money is being spent by the government, the citizens demand answers. This is not a personal attack on the people who work for government, but rather a moral responsibility by informed citizens. Thomas Jefferson said over two hundred years ago, "I think myself that we have more machinery of government than is necessary. Too many parasites are living on the labor of the industrious." That was his quote.[1521.83][1521.83][applause] Government becomes very good at spending other people's money. As elected public officials, we have been charged and entrusted with the responsibility to ask questions, demand answers, and spend the money wisely. County government employees should not be shocked or offended when budgets are examined and questions are asked. How can county government justify increasing the tax burden to continue to grow government when families are now living on significantly less? Mr. Kenley is here tonight, but from his email that he sent, he says he's taken a seventy percent pay increase, decrease, over the last four years, but continued to pay one hundred percent of the many taxes that he owes. It is time to take a hard, long look at what we are doing and where we are going. The questions are hard and the solutions are not easy, but I was elected by the citizens of Iredell County to be a conservative voice, to eliminate excessive taxes, to eliminate deficit spending, to eliminate debt, and to promote civic responsibility, and to reduce the size of government, and believe in the citizens of this county. As hard as it is and as unpopular as it may be, I am taking a stand for myself and for the hard-working citizens that entrusted me, and I will not vote for any tax increase.[1642.51][1642.51][applause] As it has been inferred tonight, this is not a political agenda on my part, but it is time to give the taxpayers a break and lower the taxes. And I want to...[1679.01][1679.01][applause] I want to conclude and say that even though we may philosophically disagree with people sitting in the room, I really, truly want to express my thanks to every single person that has come out tonight and been part of this process, whether we agree or not, because thank God, we live in a free country and we can do that. And I applaud you for standing up for what you are passionate about, whether it's the park and rec, the public schools, or lower property taxes. And I do thank you for being here tonight and expressing to us where you feel, where you stand. And I am going to make proposals to the board in the next few days that we will vote on, and I do not know the outcome of where we will be at the end of that. But I believe that we can and we should lower the spending in Iredell County.
If I could be afforded the luxury to say a few words. Like Ms. Griffith, I'd like to thank all you folks for coming tonight. Thank you for your concern for public policy as it relates to Iredell County. This concern is appreciated. Thank you to those who spoke during this meeting, especially those who are not accustomed to speaking in such public forums. We have arrived at a difficult budgetary time in Iredell County. Please allow me a few moments to address the events that brought us to this present unpleasantness. If we retrace our steps, we will learn that a policy to provide affordable housing to everyone indeed became a very expensive process. A word of warning, the same people who brought you affordable housing now say... A word of warning, the same people who brought you affordable housing now say that they will provide you with affordable health care. I'm not in Congress, but it does relate to your county budget. Their judgment cannot be trusted. Loans were made to people for homes they could not afford. In some cases, public assistance and unemployment compensation were counted as income to qualify an applicant for the purchase of a home. The sphere of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac soon grew that they secured loans for homes up to and including nine hundred thousand dollars in evaluation, far exceeding the original intent of the program. These GSEs or government-sponsored enterprises, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, were never registered with the Security and Exchange Commission. The SEC indeed had no idea that they were making such risky loans, but they were implicitly backed by the faith and credit of the United States government. They were the origin of this disease. They bundled these loans together as mortgage-backed securities, and they sold them to Wall Street, and Wall Street became the conduit by which this disease was spread. In Congress today, legislation is pending, soon to come out a committee that will eliminate Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, but do not become excited. The legislation that will replace this will create another government agency that is not implicitly backed by the faith and credit of the United States, not implicitly backed by the faith and credit of the United States taxpayer, it is explicitly backed by the United States taxpayers. If that had been the case in two thousand and eight, Lehman Brothers would have never been allowed to go bankrupt, and you would have been stuck with the bill. To his credit, late in his second term, Bill Clinton's administration warned of the potential problems. The Bush administration repeatedly warned Congress and the leadership of both parties only to be excoriated by the lacks of Barney Frank, who has now admitted that he secured a job for his boyfriend at a government-sponsored enterprise. Any other time, he would have been tarred and feathered. These policies continue to inflate housing costs. You cannot pick up two editions of the Wall Street Journal two days in a row for over two years without an article warning of the pending doom. In two thousand and eight, the bubble burst, which prompted the Wall Street bailout. These policies coupled with a policy by the Federal Reserve under Alan Greenspan and now by Ben Bernanke of Easy Credit, this policy pursued by the Fed for a cheap dollar hoping to prop up domestic production resulting in cheaper exported goods for us to maintain affordable credit. Next, we have the stimulus spending, which had minimal impact on economic activity and a short-lasting benefit. Then, Mr. Bernanke began quantitative easing, which has created the desire and opportunity for money to be made on commodities such as wheat, corn, cotton, and oil. He now believes that he can mop up all of the six hundred billion dollars of fiat money he has printed, just at the right time, not to choke off economic recovery or lead to higher inflation. He will not be successful. These policies coupled with the state of North Carolina's management over the last twenty years, which has been seriously mismanaged as they continually exceeded their budget, raised taxes, and then pushed costs down to local governments, have created the problems that we're gapping with now. Keynesian economic policy has never worked. It has never worked. John Maynard Keynes, the invention of government stimulus spending, and to my estimation, was a fool. County spending has declined, as Mr. Mashburn said, under this economic downturn from one hundred and sixty-five million to one hundred and fifty million, three hundred thousand per year that it is currently. This proposed budget would result in a spending plan of about one fifty-seven point five million. It would remain well below the one hundred and sixty-five million, but in current economic environments, my estimation, it is still too high. This Board has already made in this budget deliberative process a number of cuts totaling to about one point three million dollars to date, but budget deliberations are ongoing, and I believe further cuts are necessary. The current policies in Washington will not get us out of the economic mess we're in. As I stated, Keynesian economic policies has never worked, and it never will, because government does not create wealth. Free markets create wealth. If new policies would begin today that bring about economic revitalization were initiated today, it would still take the better part of two years to begin to enjoy their benefits. Such a change in policy in the immediate future is unlikely to occur. Therefore, we must assume at least two and probably four years at least before the economy begins to grow at a sufficient rate to benefit ordinary folks. I think the, I think the economy will dip again. I do not think we have hit the bottom. The current decline in housing prices will continue for the foreseeable future. Therefore, I will not vote for a proposed tax rate of fifty cents, nor will I vote for the current rate with the cuts involved of forty-nine point two cents. But I will be fair and say that I am unprepared to commit to a specific rate at this time, but the rate I will vote for must include more substantial cuts in spending, but we must not be careful to erode significantly the county's fund balance. And that is for two reasons. When the economy dips again, we will have to make mid-course corrections. It could require more layoffs or furlough days and adjustment to fundings of outside departments and agencies. We must assume that the falling housing prices in the future will result in appeals associated with adjustment of values downward and decreasing revenues. Sinking economic activity will result in lower expected sales tax revenues, which there's a time lag, but from the time that money is spent, we actually know what it was. So if you have a payroll the size of ours before Raleigh ever tells you your sales tax revenues are going down, folks, you're already in trouble. If, if I am right and a sound financial plan is in place, the county will be okay. If I am wrong, I will look foolish, but the county will still be okay. I've been guilty of being foolish before. So the choices are not pleasant for anyone, but they must be made. In December of oh nine, I was, I was unwilling to run again, but because of illness on the Board and departing members, I decided that I would not want to leave when the county was in trouble. I knew this day was coming. The economy continued to sink. We continued to make cuts as best we could, fifteen million dollars, something we have done Raleigh has not done, Washington has not done. New faces on this Board did not introduce the concept of cuts. They've been going on for three years. So having said that, we covered your prayers, and we solicit your understanding. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I agree with every single word that you said, and I appreciate you saying it. I would like to, to provide you with some information so that, so that you can understand the incredibly difficult situation that we're in right now. And I'm gonna, and I will try to be as brief as I can, but folks, this is our budget book. It's, it's, this is a complex process of how we're funded and how the money is spent. And believe me, a tremendous amount of money that is spent in this county is spent with, under the rules and guidelines written by nobody who is sitting up here right now. Let me start off by saying that when people say big government, in Iredell County is big government. Let's talk about what big government is. It's our schools. It's our Sheriff's Department. It's the Department of Social Services. It's the Health Department. It's the library. It's Economic Development, EMS, and then the, then the General County Offices, Tax Collection, Finance, Veteran Services, Mapping, Inspections, Planning, all the little slices that, they don't get any glory when times are good, but they sure do get crapped on when times are bad. And you're not parasites, by the way, if you're, if you're in here. Our sheriff is a Republican, and he's a conservative. And during the time period from two thousand and one through now, the general government, I'm talking about Tax Office, Mapping, Veteran Services, not talking about EMS, DSS, Health Department. During the time that our county population went up thirty percent, our staff went up twenty-five percent. So did government grow? Yes. The population grew, but our core staff grew at a lower rate. Our Sheriff's Department, and our sheriff is a conservative, he's a Republican, his staff went up forty-two percent. Now, do you consider your police protection big government? If you do, we can cut it. But it's the policeman who's out there protecting you. But we can cut it. It's part of government, and if all government is big government, we can cut it. Just tell us which address you don't want him to show up at when the nine-one-one call comes, and we can do it with less people. EMS, you know, we have what are called standards of care. There's a certain number of minutes that is considered acceptable response time for And they've asked for some additional people. Let me tell you, when I call nine-one-one, I want them to show up. Now, let's talk about what percentages of the budget it is. Education is fifty-two percent of the budget. We just talked about the sheriff. He's fifteen percent of the budget. EMS is only two percent of the budget. It's fairly small. The Health Department is three percent of the budget, and David Boone was our speaker, and he was chairman of the, of that Board for almost the whole time I was on it. And let me tell you what, I saw him fight tooth and nail against every mandate. I promise you, there is not a single voluntary spending initiative in our Board of Health that originated in this county, not one. And if you don't believe me, ask David Boone. He was the chairman. Now, Department of Social Services, I agree with you, Eddie. Back when unemployment was five percent, it used to drive me nuts to know that somebody, when employers couldn't hire anybody, I kind of wondered what those people were doing. But unemployment's a whole lot higher, and there's folks that have walked through those doors that have never walked through those doors before. I'm some, three years ago, I lost my job, and I thank God I got another one. So I know. You don't have to tell me what it's like to go home and tell your kids daddy doesn't have a job. I know. I don't want anybody to lecture me on that. Well, the Department of Social Services, we don't write any rules for them. We are required to staff it and write the check. There's not one single county-originated initiative in the Department of Social Services, not one. But we have to write the check based upon what the state of North Carolina says that we've got to do. The Board of Elections, we don't get to write the rules for how elections are conducted, not one. Those are written by the state of North Carolina. We get to write the check. We did grow libraries. We built a new one here, and Mooresville built a new library down south. And we, we've reduced hours. Their budget's gonna get cut, but do we really want to close the library we just built? Economic Development, that's two percent of our budget. A lot of that money's already been promised, and that was to get businesses here. Unfortunately, the way, the way of the world has changed. We've got to bribe businesses to come here. If we don't, they don't seem to come. Do I like it? No, I hate it. And it is bribery. And when they come and they ask for more, I consider it blackmail. That's the way the game is played, and if we don't play it, we're not going to get more businesses here. So, so when I look at, also, I look at the budget and we go, well, Mitchell College, they've grown. That's big government. They're asking for more money. You're right. In the past three years, they've seen their enrollment go up by forty percent, forty percent. That's what big government looks like. People who lost their jobs and they're looking to get retrained, where do they go? They don't go to NC State. They're unemployed. They go to Mitchell. Mitchell cannot turn them down. These are your neighbors. Kids that used to go to State and Chapel Hill and their parents don't have the money, guess where they're going now? They're going to Mitchell. That's what big government looks like in a time of a recession. I'm not making these figures up. This is what we've got to deal with. It's easy to say we can cut. You've got forty percent more students, and we're gonna tell them to cut? This is, there were also additional mandatory insurance expenses that we had never had before, and they amounted to, how much was it this year?
Five hundred.
Ballpark, it was the work.
Workers' comp.
The workers' comp, ballpark, what, how many?
Four hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Four hundred and thirty-eight thousand. That wasn't even in the budget last year. Do we have an option to pay it?
No.
No, we don't have an option to pay it. The, the Retirement Fund, which is run by the state, in the past two years, that fund has gone, that bill has increased by about, what, five hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
We don't have an option to pay that bill either. Just in those two items, we're almost at a million dollars. So I know it's easy to say that we're a big fat government. I know it's easy. Good gosh, I used to run my mouth, too. But when you learn the facts, it's not as easy to just say, well, you know what, there's got to be something we can cut. These are smart people on the Board. We, we've gone through the budget, we're continuing to go through the budget, and we're trying to balance, that delicate balance between doing what's right for the citizens who receive those services and doing what's right for the citizens who pay for those services. And I'm gonna tell you, it's just not as easy as it looks. Thank you very much.
I don't have a whole lot to say, Mr. Chairman, but I want to tell you, folks, I was down in Raleigh for twelve years, went through twelve budget sessions, and it was a whole lot easier to do a budget there than it is here, because with a hundred and twenty House members and the budget being done behind closed doors, we really didn't have anything to do except go out there on the floor and vote no and go back home campaigning, hey, we voted against that budget because it's wasteful spending. But it's a little bit different here tonight. There's five of us. Three of us have to decide what we're gonna do, what we're gonna do the best for this side and that side, and the other ones that are home tonight that are not here. Ken went through a whole laundry list of, of items that we're faced with, and one thing we heard just the other night was, we have to have another ambulance and a crew. A crew is six EMS technicians. So we've got to buy the new ambulance. Now, why do we need another ambulance crew, you may ask? Because we found out last week that the people don't need Obamacare. They're already using nine-one-one. They're calling it for everything. And EMS director says they have to make runs to these houses and listen to the people, check the blood pressure, whatever, and if they feel like they need to run to the hospital, they take them. A lot of times, they like to just tell them, hey, you know, you're okay. But they, they have to go to those places. Ken, I see it was brought up earlier tonight about our new employees that we've got, we gained. Go over to DSS and look at the long lines going in that building. Some of those new employees are over there. We had to hire them to take care We had to hire them to take care of the people that are unemployed. And as Ken mentioned, Mitchell College, Dr. Easton told us that he's not being overrun with young students, he's being overrun with people that are 45, 50 years old. And he said, I'm telling you, the men are having much harder troubles adapting to going to school than the females are. These are gentlemen that've been laid off, had never had to go back to school, now they're trying to learn a new trade. We had new buildings for Mitchell down in Mooresville and Stachville. We're now having to keep the maintenance up on the buildings and utilities. The school bonds that were passed recently overwhelmingly by a vote of the people. Those payments are due, we're making those payments, but we have maintenance on them, we have the utility cost on them. And that's not cheap. We're having to buy new sheriff's cars this year. Cars have gone up. Our jail and our sheriff's department, as Ken rightly mentioned, we've had to hire new deputies. Why? Because of the crime rate out there. And I wish we had more, because it's going to get worse, in my opinion. The jail is overflowing with our less desirable citizens that have chosen the easy way to try to make a living. We're going to have to build a new jail one day. And it was brought out by Mr. Mashburn about our revenue-neutral tax rate. The quote that was in the paper the other night about me making a statement that we had reduced the taxes in 1992 from 59 to 45 cents, and we were not applauded, that statement was correct, but the newspaper cannot print everything that's said. The very next statement said the reason was because we didn't cut taxes. We went from 59 to 45 because it was revenue-neutral. We have been being bombarded by people that saying they don't want any tax hike, and as Mr. Mashburn said, 47.1 is the new revenue-neutral after the revale. So, if we start at 47.1 and go back down to 44.5, that's going to be a good tax cut for everybody. But how did they arrive at that 47.1? Mr. Mashburn, as many years as he's been in government, he said it's the first year he's ever seen a revale come in where it was less dollars. 58% of the properties in Iroh County went down. I don't know if anybody that really wanted to value their property go down just for tax benefit. It hurts your bottom line. But a lot of them did go down. The biggest brunt of those that went down are the commercial properties. When you shut down a factory and you pull the machinery out, the county took a big hit on the tax there. We took a big hit on the value of those big box buildings that went down. Now, we still have our 159,000 people here. They're needing more services, more jail space, and I'm telling you, there's not a member on this board, none of us, that have talked about raising taxes. We don't want to raise taxes, but we have to be responsible and look at what we are mandated to fund, and we are trying to cut what we don't need. But it's difficult, I'm telling you. It is the worst time I have ever seen in all my years of being involved. And I appreciate you all coming out tonight, and I hope that you all will bear with us as we go through this. We've still got more to go, and we are, believe me, we're looking after everyone's best interest to fund what we have to fund and what we can get done for our people.
Mr. Norman has a few comments, then we're going to take a brief recess. I'm going to go find some suntan lotion.
Folks, we'll be long. I want to thank you, thank you, people, for coming out. Thank you, want to thank you for coming out tonight, but also want to tell the public, the general public that's here tonight, we've got good county employees. There's no doubt about it. We've got good people. But thank you.
It'll take about five minutes.
Let's roll them off.
Let's knock these out in five minutes.
Yeah, right. Okay.
I got a bill. I don't know why, I don't know why.
Master, quit looking at his presents, he'll get back worse.
Because of my heart, I want to be a cowboy. My nice man, too.
No, I used to joke with you. All right, let's get rolling here.
This time, flat ass believe ya.
All right, we'll call the beating back to order at this point, and this brings us to administrative matters, and Mr. Mashburn, it's all yours.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the first item under Administrative Matters is a request for a Budget Amendment, number forty-five, to appropriate two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars in additional Criminal Justice Partnership Program grant funds. These funds have already been received, but they cannot be expended until the Board approves this budget amendment, so it is recommended that you approve the budget as requested.
Okay. All right. I'm just gonna ask anybody if they got any questions, if that's agreeable.
Did I miss something?
Yeah.
Unless anybody, Mr. Mashburn, unless anybody's got any questions, I'm just gonna let staff remain seated back there.
That'd be fine.
And we'll move this thing along here. If there's no questions of a staff member, he's come forward to explain this, or Ms. Blumstein, or anyone else, floor's open for a motion.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve Budget Amendment number forty-five.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment number forty-five, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
The next item is request from the Iroquois County Fire Tax Board to fund a utility building, which will be used to house up to two brush units and a pumper unit for the South Iroquois Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay. I'm gonna let's say a few words on this one, Mr. Thompson.
Okay.
Everybody understands.
Really, I don't say a whole lot, I'm gonna turn it over to somebody else.
Okay.
Yes, this is an amendment to allow South Iroquois Volunteer Fire Department to construct a utility building for the purpose of storing these equipment. If you have any questions, Brian Weatherman with the South Iroquois and Frank Phillips from the Fire Tax Board.
This has approval of the Fire Tax Board, Mr. Mitchell and I went down and talked to Mr. Weatherman and his crew. Any questions of these folks? If not, floor's open for a motion. Move for approval. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Thompson also, Thomas Thompson has the next one, so if you don't mind, go ahead and presenting that one.
Okay, the next one is to approve maps for the restructuring of the Central and Wilkes-Iroquois Volunteer Fire Department. What you see here is the way that the maps are laid out at this particular time, with the yellow being the present Central, the white is basically the Wilkes-Iroquois, no, the blue is Wilkes-Iroquois, and then the upper two corner is the anything outside the six mile. If you notice that red dot, that is the new Central Station. All right, Ron, you may have to help me here. I used to use these big maps. This is, this would be the new Central District taking in their station, and then Wilkes-Iroquois District would be reduced by a nominal effect, and if you want to see the Wilkes-Iroquois District... That's back to the original, excuse me.
Mr. Thompson, this, both of these districts are still agreeable to both parties, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have emails from both departments saying that they do agree to both of them.
Okay. All right, any questions of Mr. Thompson in regard to this?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Mr. Norman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, the next item is consideration for applications for pyrotechnic displays, there are three applications. We do have representatives of fire marshals here to discuss or answering questions you may have. The recommendation is that you approve these three firework display applications.
Good evening. Well, it's that time again, we celebrate the birth of this great nation that we have, and be able to enjoy its festivities. Again, in front of you, you have three applications that we have reviewed and verified. Kind of make this presentation a little bit short here, is that under North Carolina General Statute fourteen dash one forty-three, the county commissioners are required to approve all pyrotechnic events held within the county or inside their jurisdictions, or by some other appropriate duly-appointed responsible personal organization, which you guys have passed us off with the cities to be able to do their own pyrotechnic shows. So we have two that are in the unincorporated areas of the county, one of which being down at Lake Norman Yacht Club, and the other being at Queens Landing. Another demonstration will be at Troutman, part of their annual Fourth of July celebration. And we did have some other representatives here from the pyrotechnics groups, but they were out of state, so they had to leave because of the durations, I hope you understand that. So they're here not to ask a lot of technical questions about it, but in the agenda packages you have in front of you, you will see that they are some, like a checkoff sheet, for the event sponsors and also for the pyrotechnic operators. Those are the ones that we have looked at and verified, and now they're representing those for approval for you to look at and evaluate.
Okay. Have that question for it, don't blame those folks for leaving, tend to do the time to myself. All right. Floor's open for a motion, if you don't have any questions.
Make a motion that we approve, Mr. Chairman, memo number eight.
For approval, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next four items are from the Sheriff's Office, and we do have a representative here that can explain these and answer any questions, so we'll ask him to come forward.
Good evening.
Yes, sir, Mr. Camel.
The first one, I believe, is the Iroquois County Sheriff's Office seeks consent for a budget amendment to move thirty-nine hundred from commissary profits to purchase a backup computer for the main jail controls. This computer will serve as a backup to main computer that controls all doors, locks, gates, and intercoms, emergency backup in case the system goes out due to failure, lightning, or any other catastrophic event.
Okay, any questions? Pretty straightforward there. Appreciate you using those commissary funds. All right.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, Ms. Griffith, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
In addition, the next one is Iroquois County Sheriff's Office seeks consent for a budget amendment to move twenty-nine hundred from the commissary profits to purchase a new inmate restraint chair.
Heck of a chair.
Yes. Used in the jail.
Of course.
Do you have much need for this, quite often, or?
Hell, they'll figure a way to tear it up.
All right. No questions, floor's open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, move for approval. Motion for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Third is another.
It's a heck of a note, to use the money you get from selling Twinkies to the inmates to buy the chair that you're gonna lock them up in.
Ah, it's the first time those bums, first time those bums ever paid for anything, go ahead.
And I've got some more. The other one is seeks consent for budget amendment to move nine thousand from commissary profits to the Sheriff's Office training. These funds will be used for upcoming training for the Iroquois County Sheriff's Office staff.
All right. Any questions? Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Norman for approval, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
My fourth and final one is the Sheriff's Office seeks consent for a budget amendment to move sixteen thousand from commissary profits to purchase two road crew trailers equipped with restrooms. This amount includes cost of trailers, graphic taxes, dock fee, and first aid system on the trailers.
All right, any questions? Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval from Mr. Norman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Hey, do y'all have called the DOT to come pick those trash bags up, or they come around and pick them up?
I'm sure the jail takes care of them and contacts them and tells them to pick it up, I guess.
Well, they left them laying up our way for two weeks, and the mowers come by, and they just dropped the bush hog right on them orange bags and blew them everywhere.
I'll find out.
Well, hey, we've already taken care of that. Mr. Camel, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Y'all keep selling those crackers over there.
The next request is from the Social Services Department to approve Budget Amendment number fifty-one and number fifty-five. These are to appropriate additional funds that have been received in the Department of Social Services, and again, require a budget amendment before those funds can be expended.
All right. Any questions of Ms. Smith? Can we just include Budget Amendment number fifty-one, fifty-five in one motion?
I believe so, sir.
Okay. Floor's open for a motion.
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion for approval for budget amendments.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one and fifty-five, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ms. Smith, we appreciate you being here.
Item J is request from ICAS or the Transportation Department to approve Budget Amendment number fifty-two, and again, this is to also appropriate additional funds from the Rural Operating Assistance Program, or ROPES, as you've heard it referred to, and Job Access Reverse Commute Program. And again, these are additional funds that the department has received, but must receive a budget amendment before they can be expended.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Garrison, he's standing by if you do.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Mr. Norman, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Garrison.
The item K is memo number fifteen, and you have a letter recommending from the tax administrator, Mr. Bill Furches, to request the Board reappoint Steve Urban as county assessor in accordance with NCGS one oh five two ninety-four A, to a two- or four-year term ending June the thirtieth, or thirteen, or fifteen. Also to reappoint Laura Crater as the assistant assessor for the same term that you appoint Mr. Urban. This will be the second term for both of them.
Do we have specified our two- or four-year term?
You do have to decide whether it's a two- or a four-year term.
Can we lock him in for four years?
That's your pleasure. I think the manager's recommending two. I think they're a little bit out of sync over there, aren't they, as far as their appointments?
Say again, sir.
I think they're a little bit out of sync on their appointments, it's in some...
Well, I do know that right now, the tax collector will come up in two more years, and if you put the tax assessor on a two-year term, then that would make them all come up in two more years.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, move for a two-year term.
Okay. Okay, motion for a two-year term from Mr. Urban, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. They'll get everybody lined up together over there. Okay.
The next item is request for reappointment of the deputy tax collector, Calley Campbell. That's memo number sixteen, and this also would be a two-year term ending June the thirtieth of two thousand and thirteen.
Okay. Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Norman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
You have a request from Mitchell Community College for approval of Budget Amendment number fifty-four. This will allow them to transfer ten percent of the amended capital outlay appropriation to the current expense due to increased cost of utilities and other operating expense. Under current statutes, they can move ten percent without Board approval, but they've already done that, and they need another ten percent, and it does require Board approval.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for approval from Ms. Griffith, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
The next item is a determination regarding the July meeting schedule. And the reason we're asking for that now is because of advertising that may have to be done if the meeting dates are changed. Normally, or traditionally, because of all the meetings that you have in June relative to the budget, you normally only hold one meeting during the month of July. The meeting would normally be the fifth of July and the nineteenth of July.
What's it looking like?
Mr. Chairman, I...
Oh, July.
I could, I potentially will be out of town the night through the sixteenth.
The what? Night through the sixteenth? About the eighteenth?
Ask for an intern.
About a regular night of nineteen.
Regular night is the, what, the nineteenth?
The nineteenth.
Nineteen, yeah.
Nineteenth. You good?
Yeah, I'm okay on the nineteenth.
Leave it on the nineteenth and do away with it on the fifth. Motion to approve the nineteenth.
Okay.
And not the fifth.
All right. All right, motion for the nineteenth, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And item O is the approval of the May seventeenth, twenty-four, and twenty-six minutes.
I'll make a motion for approval of the minutes for May seventeenth, twenty-four, twenty-six, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Next item is an addition, Dr. Kenny Miller is here to represent the Howard Stateful Schools, requesting permission to apply for North Carolina Education Lottery Funds.
Move this one over, Kenny, I don't know if we'll have any questions or not.
Yes, you have three applications. This is for reimbursement for funding that we have already expended. Lottery funds can be reimbursed to the county, and this will go back for our fund balance where it came from.
Okay. We appreciate you working with us this way, Mr. Miller.
Yes, sir.
Getting a little bit done as we go.
Well, I apologize for the late addition, but they just posted it.
You standing here at ten o'clock.
Well, they just posted it, and you don't want to leave it, it's laying there very long, it might jerk it back, so...
You've heard the request, all, anybody have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Norman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And item Q is a request from the Mooresville South Iroquois Economic Development Commission for a release of extraterritorial jurisdiction. Ron, are you gonna handle that?
Yeah, I'll give a brief intro, and Robbie Carney's here, in case he, in case I can't answer any questions that you have. And again, I'm sorry for the late notice on this. We have a request from MSI EDC for a release of jurisdiction, or extraterritorial jurisdiction into the town of Mooresville. The location for this is in the Mooresville Business Park, and is surrounded by other pieces that are within either the corporate limits or in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the town. The intent is to accommodate an industry that is looking seriously at locating in Mooresville, and this will be one of those pieces that will be put in place in order to make that happen, hopefully. This is a little bit different than some of the ones that we've dealt with in the past, in that I've made the recommendation to you that the decision be made, or the approval be made contingent upon the industry actually coming to Iroquois County. In the past, we've just said yes or no, but I think in a case like this, that makes a lot of sense. So within a certain amount of time, if it doesn't go through, the zoning and the subdivision control would remain with Iroquois County. The second part of this is that because of the time constraints that we have, time is of the essence, and although we have a policy in place for releases, we don't have a true ordinance that governs how we do this. Generally speaking, the policy is that we hold a public hearing, we notify adjacent property owners, and we go through a public process. However, in the past, the Board has suspended their rules and allowed for these types of releases to take place without going through that process, especially in a situation where you're not dealing with adjoining residential property owners of any significance, or not of any significance, but you're dealing with a business park here, and there shouldn't be much in the way of opposition. So my recommendation is to go through with this process if you see fit, based on the timeframe that I've laid out before you, and if it's your desire to suspend the rules, to do it tonight. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, or I'm sure Robbie would be as well.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Smith or Mr. Carney? If not, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Mashburn, that is the end of our administrative matters.
That is correct.
We got some folks waiting out here of closed session, would be in serious violation of our rules and procedures if we went ahead and met with these folks and then let them go?
Mr... No, sir, I don't think so.
I'm gonna make a motion at this point, if there's no exception, that we go into closed session under General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen A eleven A three, and one forty-three, three eighteen eleven four A four, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Carney?
Well, how old I be when we get to go home, Morris?
(laughing)
Huh? Back, Frank. How old am I gonna be before I get to go home?
(laughing)
Your birthday's today. You'll be a year old.
Okay, there'll be a result of...
Every action takes a result of the closed session. And the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to call for a public hearing on June 21st, 2011 at 7:00 PM regarding an economic development incentive of $961,200 over a six-year period for an undisclosed company based on a $45 million investment in Iredale County, as well as a $427,200 incentive over a six-year period based on a $20 million investment.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have two announcements, the vacancies occurring on boards and commissions, the Troutman Board of Adjustment, ETJ, two announcements, and the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, one announcement. Appointments to boards and commission, Adult Care Community Advisory Committee, we have one appointment. Move the table. Motion to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Central Line of Workforce Development Board, two appointments.
Mr. Chairman, nominate Jan Comer and Brenda Spees.
Okay. Motion to...a nomination for Jan Comer and Brenda Spees. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move that the floor be closed to nominations, these two be appointed by acclamation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fire Tax District Board.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Billy Trivit, Jeff Tucker, Frank Phillips. With that announcement, Jeff Tucker said this will be his last term.
Okay.
He's gonna retire from it.
He's done a good job.
Yes, he has.
All right. If there's no other nominations, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint these three gentlemen by acclamation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Eye Care Board of Directors, two appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Keith Williams and Bob Gorley.
Okay. Ms. Griffith nominates Mr. Williams and Mr. Gorley, any other nominations? If not, floor is closed to nominations, and I move we appoint these two by acclamation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Jury Commission, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pretty sure that's what Woody Woodard wanted to serve on.
Yeah, she's... Recommend Irene Blackburn.
Wait, I'm sorry, what were you saying?
Woody Woodard wanted to serve on the jury commission.
Um...
On that, Mr. Chairman, there are three members on that, and I don't...in the past, the clerk of court has had one nominee, and the commissioners, if I'm not mistaken, used to have two, is that still the way? Is this a clerk of court, clerk of court appointment?
No, this right here is the commissioner's appointment.
This commissioner's?
And I think we just have one. Or the commissioners just have one appointment.
Irene Blackburn, it says, is...
Woody Woodard asked me about it more than a month ago, and I've said something to you about it, and I don't know when it was coming up.
Superior Court or something like that.
I like to keep the clerk of court's recommendation on Irene Blackburn.
Well, floor is open for a nomination.
I'm gonna go ahead and nominate Woody Woodard.
Okay, are any other nominations?
I nominate Irene Blackburn.
Yeah, I already did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought I did.
I didn't hear you.
All right. So, we have two nominations, all in favor of Mr. Woodard, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of Ms. Blackburn, say aye.
Aye.
But Ms. Blackburn got it by 3-2 vote, 3-2. Okay. Junal Crime Prevention Council, we have 16 appointments, the individual terms expire on June 30th, and contact about reappointments following indicated will then serve again. Floor is open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Kelly Johnson, Carrie Nitsu, and Steve Hampton.
I nominate Carl Robbins, Jim Mixon, Bill Hamby, Rhonda Cuchet, and Susan Blumstein. Any other nominations?
Did you get to Nitsi?
Nitsi, I did, yes, sir.
You get that?
Yes, sir.
That's all on that, right?
All right. I move we close the floor to nominations, and appoint these folks by acclamation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Plan Board, three appointments.
Can we table these until the next meeting?
It's your pleasure, sir. Is that a motion to table?
Yes.
Okay, so, a motion to table, Mr. Robinson, all in favor, say aye.
It's 11:20, I just don't wanna make that decision.
I understand. Okay. All in favor of the motion to table, I don't know if we called a question on that.
Yes.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Social Services Board.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate David Boone.
Any other nominations?
Commissioner Griffith, I'm sorry, what was the name of the...
David Boone.
David Boone.
Any other nominations? I'm not going to work that hard.[300.12][300.12](laughing) I will not be taking phone calls in the morning.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, carries unanimously. Mortal Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment.
Can we table that one as well?
Motion to table. Motion to table for Ms. Griffith, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any unfinished business?
Sorry.
You business, county mayor, or the court?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any report, but in the spirit of full disclosure, I'd like to reveal the gift I got from the city. I got a beautiful cowboy belt, that will go...western belt, that'll go great with my boots and my cap, and so, one of these days, you'll see me out.
All right. Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The... Make a motion, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The...